Catherine, I believe I'm back with you.
All right, I'm going to start again.
Thank you, all set.
So, welcome everyone to the September 28, 2020, meeting of the Planning Board for the Town of Chatham. My name is Catherine Halpern. I'm Chair of the Planning Board for the Town of Chatham. This meeting is being conducted by remote participation only. It is being broadcast live on Channel 18 and will also be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing. I do need to ask if anyone is recording the meeting. It's all right to record the meeting.
Okay, you want me to do the groceries and I'll start with the meeting?
But the Chair needs to be notified. And again, if I could ask everyone who's connected, if you're not speaking, could you kindly mute your microphone and turn off your video? Thank you so much. So we'll go ahead. So again, just if everyone who's connected, unless you're speaking and you've been recognized by the Chair, if you would so kindly have your video off and your audio muted, thank you. So I will read some points now about our remote participation procedure. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GLC 30A 18, and the Governor's March 23, 2020, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Chatham Planning Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410. That's 1-508-945-4410. And our conference ID number is 225-322-986-POUND. That's 225-322-986-POUND. You may also join the meeting online via the link that is in the agenda posted on the Town website, and you would be using Microsoft Teams to join online. Despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access, and we will post a record of this meeting on the Town's website as soon as possible. And in the event that anyone becomes inadvertently muted during the course of the meeting, please press *6 on your phone. As I understand, you can use *6 to mute or unmute your phone. Now I'll just go through a few procedural steps. I will begin in a minute with the roll call of all Planning Board members. Also, at this time, if any Planning Board members needs to recuse themselves from any matters on tonight's agenda, I'd like you to make that recusal. Also, when non-Board members, citizens, are participating in the call, when you're recognized by the Chair and you're speaking, could you please repeat your name and also the last four digits of your phone number? If you're connected by phone, we just need to be able to clearly identify each speaker. And I will just note that after an agenda item has been discussed by the Planning Board, by the public body, we'll request also comments from citizens and non-Board members. I will also note for everybody that all votes by the Planning Board will be taken as a roll call vote. You'll notice that I will also ask for Planning Board comments and questions in a roll call fashion. And at the end of the meeting, we will close with a verbal confirmation and note the time of adjournment. So with that being said, I will start with a roll call of the Planning Board members to make sure everyone's present. Art Spru.
Art Spru, present.
Warren Chain. Warren Chain, you may be muted. Warren Chain. I did see Warren connected to the call. Have you been... Warren, are you present? I think you're muted. Could you just acknowledge verbally? I'll go on, and we'll come back to Warren. Tom Gagin.
Tom Gagin, present.
Thank you, Tom. Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus, present.
Thank you, Bob. Bob Wertschfter.
Bob Wertschfter, present.
Thank you, Bob. Roger Griffin.
Roger Griffin, present.
Thank you, Roger. This is Catherine Halpern. I am present. I also will recuse myself from the two matters of Chatham Bars Inn, 20 Chatham Bars Avenue and 45 Chatham Bars Avenue. And now let's go back to Warren Chain. He does show up on the participants list, but I did not hear Warren, your verbal acknowledgement of your presence.
Catherine, this is Ally. Something might be wrong with his computer. I'm going to give him a call quickly.
All right, good. Good. Thank you, Ally. And I think we'll just move forward with that. And first item on our agenda is the September 14 minutes. So again, I will go through each board member. Let me know if you have any amendments or additions to the September 14 minutes. Art Spru.
Art Spru, I have no amendments, no comments.
Thank you, Art. Warren Chain, if you're connected. Tom Gagin.
No changes.
Thank you, Tom. Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus, no changes.
Thank you. Bob Wertschfter.
Bob Wertschfter, no changes.
Roger Griffin.
Roger Griffin, no changes.
Thank you. And this is Catherine Halpern. I have no changes or additions. With that, may I have a motion to approve the September 14 minutes as submitted.
Art Spru will make that motion.
Thank you, Art.
Bob Dubus will second it.
Thank you. So we'll do a roll call vote. Art Spru.
Art Spru, approve.
And I'll try Warren Chain again, if you're connected, Warren.
I'm Chairman. This is Warren Chain. I am present, and I have no comments on or about changes to the minutes.
And do you vote to approve them?
I do.
Thank you, Warren. Tom Gagin.
Tom Gagin, vote to approve.
Thank you. Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus, vote to approve.
Bob Wertschfter.
Bob Wertschfter, vote to approve.
Roger Griffin.
Roger Griffin, approve.
And this is Catherine Halpern. I also vote to approve. Thank you. Next on our agenda is a public hearing. And this public hearing is pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5, Adoption or Change of Zoning Ordinances or Bylaws. And this is regarding, this public hearing is regarding the Main Street Theater Overlay District. This is a citizen's petition for a protective zoning bylaw amendment for the Town of Chatham. And this article would create a Main Street Theater Overlay District, MST Overlay District, encompassing the former Monomoy Theater properties located at 776 Main Street and 70 Depot Road. I will begin by reviewing the public hearing procedures, and then we will have the notice read by our clerk, Roger Griffin. But that is the first step, to read the public notice. Then we have the presentation by the applicant. After that, there will be board questions and comments, and again, I'll do that by roll call. Then we will have public statements in favor of the application. After that, the Chairman will read all correspondence that we have received on this matter, and we will read that into the record. After that, is public statements opposing the application. And then, following that, there will be opportunity for rebuttal by the applicant. And following that, we will have board comments and discussion. And then at that point, if the board feels that the proceedings have gone along sufficiently, the board would vote to close the hearing, and then the board would enter formal deliberations on the matter. It should be noted that once the hearing is closed, audience participation is no longer permitted during the board deliberations. So that's our public hearing procedure. So let's begin. Roger Griffin, could you read the public notice?
Yes, I'm all set. In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, 40A, Section 5, the Chatham Planning Board will hold a remote public hearing on September 28, 2020, at 4:00 p.m. to take public comments on the following proposed amendments to the Protective Zoning Bylaw. Citizen petition article, Protective Zoning Bylaw Amendment, established establishment of Main Street Theater Overlay District, to see if the Town will adopt the following amendment to the Town of Chatham Protective Bylaw. Under Section 4 Overlay Regulations, by adding a new overlay district as follows. Main Street Theater Overlay District. Purpose: The MST Overlay District is intended to encourage the restoration of the existing historic buildings, which will comprise of the former Monomoy Theater, which includes the existing Main House, the Washington Taylor House, and the existing theater building, while also providing the opportunity for additional downtown housing options in the form of small dwellings located in clustered buildings within the MST Overlay District. Location: The MST Overlay District is located along Main Street in downtown Chatham and extends in a northerly direction to Depot Road. It includes the following properties: 776 Main Street, Assessor Map 14E-37-56, and 70 Depot Road, Assessor Map 19E-59-51, and is further shown on sketch plan attached here too, dated January 11, 2019. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on this zoning proposal should call the following teleconference number to join the hearing. Telephone number is 508-945-4410. Conference ID number 225-322-986. In the event that Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and the Governor's March 23, 2020, order imposing limitations of the number of people that may gather in one place terminate on or before September 28, 2020, Protective Zoning Bylaw Public Hearing, the Chatham Planning Board will hold this public hearing.
Roger, I'll interrupt you. This is Catherine Halpern. Could I ask everyone who's connected to kindly mute your microphones? Could I ask everyone who's connected, except for Roger Griffin and myself, to kindly mute your microphones, whether by phone or computer? And also, please turn off your video if you're connected by computer. Thank you. So Roger, please continue.
Great. Where was I? Okay, just through the paragraph. In the event that Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and the Governor's March 23, 2020, order imposing limitations of the number of people that may gather in one place terminate on or before September 28, 2020, Protective Zoning Bylaw Public Hearing, the Chatham Planning Board will hold this public hearing on September 28, 2020, at 4:00 p.m. in the Town Hall Annex, Large Meeting Room Number 261 George Rider Road, Chatham Mass, to take public comments on the proposed amendments to the Protective Zoning Bylaw. The full text of this proposed Protective Zoning Bylaw Amendment can be found on the Town website, www.chathammas.gov/planningboard, as well as published in the Cape Cod Chronicle on September 10 and September 17, 2020.
This is Catherine. Thank you, Roger. So we will go to the next step, which is the presentation by the applicant. And Mr. Ford, will you be presenting?
Yes, I will, Madam Chair.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. So for the record, Attorney Mike Ford, I'm here on behalf of the petitioners for this article. I'm here on behalf of the petitioners for this article and the property owner, Alexander Properties LLC. Madam Chair, the planning board is familiar with this bylaw. It was brought to the planning board in preparation for the early summer town meeting and had a public hearing. The planning board voted to endorse it unanimously. And it was not acted on at that town meeting. And at the request of the Board of Selectmen, the petitioners agreed to postpone it until a fall town meeting. Fall town meeting was unable, or there was a decision not to hold a fall town meeting by the Board of Selectmen. And the petitioners decided to bring a citizens petition for a special town meeting for consideration of the bylaw. Thus, it makes itself back to your board again for a fresh review under the process of 40A, Section 5, having been referred by the Board of Selectmen to you for a public hearing and a recommendation to the legislative body of the town meeting, who will be meeting on it this coming Saturday. Madam Chair, there are two changes to the bylaw since you saw it last. And I'll tell you those, but I also intend...
I've joined, honey.
Excuse me, Mike. Mike, this is Catherine. And I'll just ask you to stop for a minute. If I could ask those who have just joined in, those who have just joined in, could you kindly mute your audio? If you're on the phone or joined by computer, please mute your audio. You can press *6 to mute your phone. And if you are joined by computer, could you kindly also turn off your video? So if everyone except for Mike Ford and myself at the moment, could you mute your audio and turn off your video? Thank you. That will stop the feedback. Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Madam Chair, since this is a new proceeding, it's my intention, unless you as the chair direct otherwise...
Excuse me, Mr. Ford. I see, could I ask Ms. Gary, thank you, to mute your phone? Thank you. All right, I think we're all set. Go ahead, Mike.
Okay. So unless you direct me otherwise, Madam Chair, I intend to make a full presentation of the bylaw again and not simply mention just the two changes since the last time.
Yes. I think that would be fine. I'd also like you to mention the two changes.
I'll mention it right at the outset.
Yes. Good, that'll be great. Go ahead.
So the two changes are, under Section 3, Uses, Subparagraph B, small little i, where it says, "No dwelling unit shall exceed, it's now 1,400 square feet of finished floor area and contain more than two bedrooms." In the prior version of this proposed bylaw, that read 1,250 square feet. So there's a proposed increase of 150 square feet in the minimum, maximum size, excuse me, of one of the condominium or apartment units. The second change, Madam Chair, is in the same section, Section 3, Uses, small paragraph B, triple little i, the total redevelopment area that needs to be provided per dwelling unit. That was previously 32, 150. It is now 4,200. So we've increased that as well. But that's an increase in the amount of buildable upland that's required to support each dwelling unit that may be eligible for a special permit by the zoning board of appeals. So those are the only two changes since your board acted on it and recommended favorably the last time we were here. So with that, Madam Chair, I will, in a summary sort of fashion, but I want to kind of walk through the bylaw to put it in perspective for those who are at this hearing.
Thank you.
As indicated in the notice that it was read, this involves two parcels of property. The so-called theater property at 776 Main Street and also the 70 Depot Road property. They're shown on a sketch that's attached. Those two properties total, Madam Chair, about 2.7 acres in area, just a hair under that. They are currently zoned GB2. General Business 2 is the zoning of those two properties. Last fall, I worked on behalf of the property owner with a town staff to develop what is before you as the Main Street Theater Overlay District. When I say town staff, we met with Katie Donovan, we met with your planner, Ally, we met with the building commissioner, and we met with Sarah Clark. I had a couple of meetings with them first to discuss the general ideas that we wanted, my client wanted to accomplish with the rezoning and to take input and ideas from town staff in terms of how the bylaw should be structured and some of the provisions of the bylaw in order for it to be consistent with other areas of the zoning bylaw. Staff was most helpful, frankly, as they always are. And they worked in cooperation and coordination with my office and with my clients. I drafted an initial draft of the overlay district once it was decided that an overlay zone was the right concept. And just a word on that, Madam Chairman. What an overlay district means is that the property will continue to be zoned GB2, its underlying zoning. But then overlaid over the GB2 district will be the Main Street Theater Overlay District. And that overlay district will allow certain uses within certain dimensional limitations that are not allowed in the GB1, I mean, excuse me, GB2 underlying district. So it's a concept in zoning that the town is familiar with. There are a number of overlay districts that currently exist within your zoning bylaw. And it was thought, given the goal and what we wanted to accomplish, that this was probably the best vehicle to bring this forward. So that's the history of how the draft occurred. And then, once we got it into a form that staff was comfortable with as to form, because obviously the question as to substance is one that is within the purview of the voters of the town at town meeting with the recommendation of your board. My clients did meet with your board. I was present. We took input from your board on our initial draft before it was filed with the warrant for the Springtown meeting. You may recall that the board had a number of suggestions, most of which we were able to incorporate into the bylaw. And when we came back for our formal public hearing, I reviewed all of those changes with the board. And I think that the board found them to be satisfactory, at least to the point where the board was willing to make a recommendation to report the matter favorably to the Springtown meeting. Since that time, my clients, in further developing concept plans and after consideration of some of the limitations they found when getting further along in the design, on their own decided to make the two revisions that I indicated, the size of each unit at 1,400, that small increase, and the increase in the buildable upland component, so that the density, the number of units, was reduced. This was because it appeared to them that a plan on the so-called apartment section of the site, when it's redeveloped, it appeared that 24 units at a maximum would fit much better on the site than the number of units that was previously authorized under the prior formula. And thus, they on their own brought forward that particular reduction. So with that, let me walk you through the bylaw and how it works briefly. So as I indicated, it's an overlay bylaw, so the property continues to be zoned GB2. If the bylaw is adopted and no one ever brings forward a site plan and special permit for the uses authorized under the overlay district, well then the property simply continues to be zoned GB2 and is governed by the GB2 regulations that are in the zoning bylaw. The overlay district does allow an application to be made to this board as a site plan approval application for multifamily dwelling units, a dormitory use and/or affordable housing use within the confines of the property that's located within the overlay district. That type of multifamily is not currently permitted in the GB2. Apartments are permitted in the GB1 zone under a special permit pursuant to a certain formula set forth in the bylaw. So relief was needed under the overlay district in order to bring forward both the use and the dimensional provisions and the density that is attendant to that use. Also, the use of dormitory or individual affordable dwellings within the theater side of the property also needs to be authorized by the overlay district because they're not currently permitted in the GB2 zoning district. So how does this work? If the owner brings in an application, the bylaw requires that the entire overlay district has to come in as one special permit site plan. You can't bring a special permit for one portion of the property or another. You can't simply come in and apply for the multifamily. That's not authorized under the overlay district. You can't, if you want to do multifamily units, you have to bring in the theater portion of the property at the same time. And that's required under certain sections that I will review with you. The first portion of the bylaw governs the multifamily proposed use. And as I indicated, multifamily use, the units could be no more than 1,400 square feet in size. They're limited to two bedrooms. They're limited to two stories. No habitable story below. There's a minimum of 15 feet setback between all of the buildings and the dwelling units. The lot coverage for the total redevelopment area, that's the theater plus the condominiums, is 80%. Now, how does that match up with the current zoning? In the GB1 zone, currently along Main Street in town, the lot coverage is 90%. And in the GB2 zone, the permitted lot coverage is 70%. In the overlay district, the lot coverage is increased, because remember, these are in the GB2, we're at 70%, to 80%. There's been a lot of questions about what will the size of these particular structures be? And of course, the bylaw itself is only enabling, it doesn't authorize anything to be built or permitted. It simply sets up a framework within which somebody can apply to the planning board and the zoning board for permits. And then it's up to those boards to make a decision, a discretionary decision, as to whether or not to issue those permits and at what density in terms of the redevelopment. But with 24 multifamily units on the so-called apartment portion of the site, let me just give you an idea of what the sizes could be, the maximum sizes. The total site's about 117,176 square feet. The way the owners look at it now, the theater property would be approximately 50,000 square feet, 49,000 and some change. The rear portion, where the apartments would be, would be approximately 67,500 square feet. The building footprint for each one of the apartment buildings, where they're limited to 1,400 square feet each, and they would have, there are some provisions for a garage or a staircase up, so the footprint would be a little larger. But the footprints would range somewhere around 3,400 square feet per building. So picture a single-family home about 3,400 square feet in size, and that would be about the size of one of these buildings. Two-story, however, they would not exceed the height requirement of 30 feet. So if you took all six buildings and you said, okay, how much building coverage is that? It's a little bit over 20,000 square feet, which translates into 30% building coverage. So remember, in the GB2 zone, there is no building coverage requirement. It's a lot coverage requirement, and it's currently 70%. The Main Street District would allow 80%. So if you had approximately six buildings, you'd have 30% coverage of the theater portion of the site. And then the parking would come in at around 40, excuse me, 24% or about 16,000 square feet. That's parking at one and a half spaces, which is what we proposed in the bylaw per unit. So between those two, 30% and 24%, you're up to 54% lot coverage on that section, leaving 46% green space. Now, this would be, this is just a concept based upon the maximum allowable sizes that the bylaw would authorize the planning board to approve on the special permit and the board of appeal, excuse me, the planning board on the site plan approval and the board of appeals on a special permit. But I wanted to give you some idea of what the maximum range would be, because we've heard a lot of things about how big things are. And I just wanted to put that in perspective, walking through this section of the bylaw. So when you get down to Sections 8, 9, and 10, you begin to see how the process works from a permitting standpoint. In Section 8, it dictates that any application for a site plan review, this is for multifamily units, or for a special permit for multifamily units, shall also include the plans for the restoration and redevelopment of the historic Main House and the Theater Building, and any additions or alterations thereto. This is touched on again later in the bylaw in Section... 12. If you look at Section 12, that's again Roman numeral 12, any special permit issued hereunder may include within the area of the redevelopment devoted to the restoration and redevelopment of the theater property. Oh, that's, excuse me, that's a property manager's office. I meant Section 13, Madam Chair. Any site plan approval and/or special permit issued for multifamily dwellings under this section shall, it's mandatory, shall be conditioned upon the restoration and redevelopment of the existing Main House, Washington Taylor House, and the Theater Building located in the MST Overlay District, and any alterations or additions as approved by the HBDC. So somebody's going to have to go to the HBDC and get that redevelopment plan approved and then bring it to site plan approval before the planning board and for a special permit before the board of appeals. And the overlay district, if someone, if one of those boards is granting approval of multifamily, they have to condition it upon the restoration and redevelopment of the theater side of the property. It's not a discretionary matter for either the planning board or the board of appeals. It's a requirement. So I hope that that at least addresses in part the question that a number of people have asked. Gee, can they just go out and build the condominiums and forget about the theater? The answer is no. They can't in the application process. And the board must impose strict conditions that they go forward together. Back to Section 8. The intent of Section 8 is that the site plan and plans for the special permit, again, include all... again, include all of the redevelopment within the overlay district. In other words, this is a provision that I like to call in land use, an anti-segmentation provision. You can't bring in, gee, we just want to do one condominium building or a couple of condominium buildings. The requirement of a special permit in this overlay district, you have to bring the whole thing into the town so the town can look at the whole plan, both the multifamily side and the theater side, all the renovations on the theater side, everything that's going to happen as once in one comprehensive site plan approval, one comprehensive special permit, which will have interlocking conditions. This gives the town, I respectfully suggest, all the flexibility and protection those boards need to fashion conditions that result in what we're trying to achieve here, which is in addition to the multifamily units, the restoration and renovation alteration of the theater side of the property. Parking is in nine. And just before I leave eight, for the purposes of the special permit, the zoning board of appeals is the special permit granting authority. Oh, we've kept that as they are under section VB, and if there are any non-conforming provisions here, we've made them the special permit granting authority under VB within the overlay district as well. Planning board certainly has a role here as well under the site plan approval, and as you'll see, many of the site conditions, access, egress, parking, whether to waive it, whether to waive certain setbacks or landscape requirements, are all within the purview of the planning board as they look at the site layout under the site plan approval. And some of that is laid out in section nine. There is a provision, and frankly, this was a recommendation that was made by town staff when I was working with them early on, I'm now at number 10, bottom of page two, that the area within the redevelopment plan devoted to multifamily shall be zoned on a separate lot and may be held in ownership different than the remaining lots with the MST overlay district. That, of course, would be after construction, and that would be in accordance with any conditions that the planning board or the special permit granting authority, the ZBA, put on it in terms of ensuring that the theater side of things is also completed. Paragraph nine deals with some special redevelopment options to be included in the theater portion of the site. What are those? My clients heard from a number of people that in order to redevelop the theater side of the property and have it be useful for a theater company through the summer seasons, that they ought to consider dormitory use to be part of the redevelopment of those buildings. A form of dormitory use has occurred within those buildings over many years, as we all know, and I'll just say it's a form of dormitory use. But there clearly was sections of those buildings that were habitable, at least during the summer months, by members of the theater company who utilized it. So we have put that provision in. So it is an option, and it is something both the planning board and the Board of Appeals could consider. We also heard that perhaps in lieu of the dormitory use, there could be two-bedroom affordable dwelling units there. So we made it an option, and frankly, however that shapes out will be frankly, input that we get from the general public as the project goes along, interested perhaps theater companies who might want to use it and what their needs might be, and also how the two boards, the planning board and the Board of Appeals, view that issue during their regulatory review. The, those dormitory uses and those two or the two affordable apartments, whichever the regulatory boards decide, are not subject to the buildable upland requirements imposed under the bylaw. So that's an exception there, so if the board wants to go there, then they know they're going there with that particular exception in mind, because otherwise it doesn't support the density necessary to proceed with the project. We put a provision in there because we heard when we were dealing with the various boards that before the Board of Appeals authorized either the two affordable dwelling units on the theater side or the dormitory use up to 25 beds, that they have to get a recommendation from the Board of Health with respect to that type of residential use within the theater buildings as they're laid out. Now, there've been a number of questions, Madam Chairman. Well, is this the affordable housing that we've heard about that might happen on this site? This is a part of it. I say a part of it because the multifamily units that will be granted for the other lot are subject to section seven, Roman numeral seven, section 2.1 of your existing zoning bylaw, which is your inclusionary affordable housing section of your zoning bylaw, which requires whenever somebody brings a project anywhere in town for 10 or more multifamily units, then 10% have to be affordable, deed restricted in accordance with the definition set forth in the bylaw. And so we've been asked, gee, we didn't see any provision for the multifamily. Well, that's because it's already in the bylaw under the inclusionary section, and we have not asked for any waiver from that provision in this overlay district. So those units would be subject to the inclusionary provisions of the bylaw. I've already indicated that under 13, that the site plan and special permit approvals shall, in other words, it's mandatory that they're conditioned upon the restoration and redevelopment of the theater side of the property, so we envision interlocking conditions there that your, the planning board and the Board of Appeals would impose. And then finally, we put a provision in defining the relationship to the underlying district. Again, remember, theater district's an overlay district, property continues to be zoned in the underlying district, GB2. This particular paragraph says, anything, all the provisions of the overlay district, to the extent they apply, do not trump any of the underlying zoning unless they're very specific about it. And so, but if they do, then the provisions of the overlay district prevail. And again, as I was discussing the overlay district with your staff, they thought a provision like this was important for direction of staff going forward in trying to interpret the various provisions of the underlying district and the overlay district and the relationship between the two when the comprehensive special permit and site plan came along. So that's an overview of the bylaw, Madam Chairman. I'm sorry to be so lengthy, but I did feel it was important. There's been a lot of interest in the bylaw, we appreciate that, but I wanted to kind of review again at least how we see the overlay district work.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ford. This is Catherine Halpern. Once again, a very clear and complete presentation. Now we move to the next step in our public hearing procedure, which is questions and comments from the planning board. So again, I'll do this by roll call, and we'll go, I will ask each member of the planning board for your questions and comments. And Mr. Ford, if you would like to answer or reply, we'll give you that opportunity. So Art Spru. Do you have questions or comments for Mr. Ford?
Yes, Catherine.
Please go ahead.
This is Art Spru. Few questions and a few comments. I'm just trying to get a clear understanding of this upland area. When we deal with upland areas, we deal with it on a, not by a district, but a lot-by-lot basis. So I'm uncertain how that would all work, or does that change the way we approach the supplant area calculation? If you have 24 units that is being proposed here, or that was what the number that was out there at 4,200 square feet, that's 100,000 square feet of upland area just for the, for the multifamily units. I don't know how that all works with all the theater district requirements for those structures on the same parcel. So I'm a little bit confused on how the numbers all work out in the correct way using that approach, since the lot that it has the theater district on it, I mean, the theater on it is only about 100,000 square feet. So this is, this just calls for clarification, because once we get something like this and we're asked to interpret it, we, we get, if there's not clarity in it, then we'll have to seek out advice from counsel or something else, and it starts to make our life a little bit more difficult. I don't know if you want me to pause right there and just get an answer for that, because most of the others are questions, too.
This is Catherine. I'd encourage going that route, Mr. Ford, if you'd like to reply.
I'd be happy to. Mr. Spru, good question. Understand, this is a difficult concept to get your arms around. So if I could take you to section three, B, little triple I of the proposed bylaw. That's the one in which we
Here, I see.
...umber from 32 to 4,200 square feet of buildable upland for each dwelling unit. And if you look at the last sentence of little three, you'll see the answer to the question that you've raised, which is a good question. For the purposes of the MST overlay district, the redevelopment area shall include all buildable upland included on all lots located within the MST overlay district. What does that mean? There are two lots there now. It's envisioned there would be two lots on a redevelopment plan. So the entire acreage of the parcels as they exist, 2.69 acres, is the redevelopment area, and so the buildable upland is determined using that. Now, the rest of the site, you mentioned the theater buildings and so forth, all of those stand apart from the buildable upland. In other words, if you use it for the number of multifamily units, you can also use it to support the other uses on the site. And that's the way our current bylaw works in terms of apartments where they're allowed in the GB1 zone. So when you have apartments over the top of, for example, a commercial building, you determine it the same way, and you figure the density of the number of units the same way. So that formula is not unlike the way density is determined currently under the bylaw. Now, is that, is that density to a greater degree than what's in the rest of the bylaw? Yes, it is. But it's pretty clear that that's the way the formula works.
Okay. I guess the next one is in Roman numeral nine, no, 11. That's where we talk about exclusions to the requirements for setbacks and for other dimensional requirements. I guess my concern on that is that tells me that there's no requirements for dimensions or setbacks at all. You put them right up on the property lines, the whole district. That doesn't seem like it makes sense to me when you're looking to build something or plant something. I'm a little bit concerned about having no dimensional or setback requirements at all.
Yeah, so the requirements there we're talking about are only for the dormitory and the affordable apartments. So the dormitory within the existing buildings or the affordable apartments, there, those are not subject to setback requirements or other dimensional requirements set forth in section seven, B21 of the bylaw. And those are setbacks that you'd normally have between apartments or for dormitory use on a site, because it's envisioned that those would be built within the theater structures themselves. So the theater buildings are still subject to the setback requirements, except to the extent that the planning board agrees to a waiver under site plan review where they're authorized to reduce it in some fashion, either the landscape setback or otherwise. That just relates to that dormitory use and the, or the two affordable apartments. You can't have both. It's either one or the other, and the regulatory boards will make the decision whether it's two affordable apartments that are going to be built within, somewhere within the upstairs of those theater buildings, or there's going to be some dormitory space.
Okay. I didn't pick up on that that way. I wasn't sure if others were interpreting it that way, but, I mean, the way it's written there, you could build a separate building, you can put that in there, and then you can put it right against property line, no setbacks, no dimensional requirement at all. I don't see where that's, that requirement says it's got to be within a structure, within an existing structure.
And let me also suggest this to you. It's up to the boards that it's in front of as to whether they authorize it at all. And so it may be that a comprehensive plan is brought to the planning board and the Board of Appeals. There's no requirement that regulatory boards have to allow either the dormitories or the two affordable apartments.
Okay.
They have to satisfy themselves. So if somebody's going to stick a building over on a lot line, I can see that's not going to get very far with a regulatory board, not given my experience.
Okay. I think I have just one more question. That's on Roman numeral 13. This is talking about, you know, site plan approval, it's got to be for everything, including the theater as well as the multifamily.
Yes.
I guess this is something I have to put out there to Catherine and Ally. There's nothing in here that says that you're going to build the, or do the restoration or redevelopment. Are you going to walk away from the site after the multifamily are built? I understand that's all part of the approval process, but unless we come up with a phased construction where it says you can do a portion of the multifamily and you have to do a portion of the restoration, I just don't see how we have any control over this. And if everything gets done on the multifamily side, and there is, years go by and nothing gets done on the theater itself, I don't think that benefits the town at all. So is there something that we can do as a board to put a phased development in this, in the approval process so that there is some fashion of checking ballots associated with the work progresses on both sides, not just one side only?
Yeah. Madam Chairman, if I may, Art.
Yes, please go ahead.
Excellent question. And I purposely drafted 13 to make it, to give the regulatory boards as much flexibility as they wanted to use. But I did make it mandatory so that they could not issue a special permit unless it was for both. In other words, for the multifamily and the multifamily being conditioned upon the restoration and redevelopment of the existing main house. So my experience with the Board of Appeals, in a situation like that, the conditions would be that you couldn't get an occupancy permit for the multifamily units until occupancy permits were issued on the other side. There would be ways to fashion those conditions, and I tried to make it as, as general and as flexible as I could so that the regulatory board could fashion their conditions accordingly.
Okay. I think that's all I have right now, Catherine.
All right.
I appreciate, I appreciate the responses.
Thank you, Arthur. So next we'll go to Warren Chain. Warren, are you connected? Do you have some questions or comments? Yes?
Madam Chairman, thank you very much. I can't hear really anything except the shriek at the moment. Can you hear me?
There, that's better. Again, this is Catherine. Halpern, I'm just going to ask everyone who's connected, unless you're Warren Chain and myself. And then, actually, Mr. Ford, I'll ask you to mute your
I'll get off right now.
Yes. All right. It might be, this is Catherine's, Halpern's speaking, might be a technical issue, Warren, with your particular connection. That sounds better. And if I could just ask everyone now, except for Warren Chain, who will be speaking, and then when Mr. Ford responds, to please mute your audio on your computers or on your phone, and also please turn off your video. So please, Warren, go ahead with your comments and questions for Mr. Ford.
Yes, this is Warren Chain.
Catherine, this is Ally. Warren, I actually just muted you, Warren. It might be better if you call us as well on the telephone and then you can speak that way.
Ally, Ally, this is Mark.
Hi, Mark.
It might be that Warren was logged in twice.
Mark, this is Catherine. So how can we correct that?
I've removed Warren on one instance. We can try again if Warren can unmute his mic and everybody else remains muted.
Please go ahead, Warren.
I am now unmuted again. Can you hear me?
You're a little low. If you could speak more directly into your microphone, that might help.
Well, I'm only eight inches away.
Okay. All right. That's good.
The, Mr. Ford, Madam Chairman, for the record, I would like to clarify that when I heard Mr. Ford's initial presentation to the planning board, no one was more enthusiastic in support of the concept than I. But my understanding and my support of that presentation was in concept only. There being no specific proposal being made, there being no specific plan for the real estate development portion or for the theater redevelopment, either one. Everyone's understanding, I believe, is that we all in Chatham are very much in support of trying to retain the Montomois Theater. We're very much in support of any new owners which have that objective. That said, I think that my feelings toward the overlay district are very much tied to assurances that the rather unique permissions being sought for zoning of high density would be the quid pro quo for the town, having some assurances that the theater would continue. That said, however, there is no assurance of any kind that a college or university will find whatever terms are offered by the new owners to be acceptable, either because of financial obligations or because of an aversion to lending the support of a not-for-profit university to a purely for-profit theater operation. The owners are under no obligation that I can see to support the theater. And if it fails, the owners are under no obligation to support it and would be free to develop the theater site into whatever uses were permitted in the GB zone. So with that as somewhat of a preamble, I would also add, I guess, that the suggestions that I made notes of that were suggested to that initial presentation to the planning board, I do not find reflected in the final proposal at all. And without there being some specificity, I find it very difficult at this time to lend my support. That said, I do have some specific comments and questions in addition. I asked really why, although requested at that initial presentation, is there no plan available showing the layout of the proposed units? One question that came up was, where is the rehearsal stage to be located? It is currently, I believe, in the middle of the park to be developed for residences, but it's an important element of the theater complex. And I've had no information provided at all as to what the thoughts were as to where it would be placed. Also, it was a surprise when I saw there's now a restriction of age 55 plus on the units. That certainly makes them impossible for even a wealthy young couple starting out to participate and, or started, prior to starting a family. And certainly almost ensures that they would be units acquired by wealthy townies, town residents, either for their own use or for seasonal rentals. But the justification rationale or the benefits of the town of restricting it to age 55 was certainly not clear. I also was curious as to what the target average selling price for these units would be. From the small pieces of information I've read of letters from the public and in the newspaper, it does seem to me that these are likely to be selling for a million dollars plus. That being the case, it certainly is difficult to justify this increase in density as supporting the objectives and goals of the long-range strategic plan of the town, which is focusing on more affordable housing and maintaining or reducing to the extent possible the density of housing. But the rationale for providing more multimillion-dollar condos for seniors is therefore somewhat at conflict with my understanding of what the town has multiple times over the years indicated were its goals and objectives. Now, the proposed overlay district does seem to be nothing more than a disguised spot zoning that guarantees significant benefits to the applicant, but with no sure benefits to the town and certainly no guarantee that the Montomois Theater will continue to exist as we all hope that it will. And the, well, another comment, the 1,400-foot square foot of living space, that suggests that we have four units per building, that's 5,600 square feet of living space, which is a rather huge house if it were a single-family home. And it's certainly a monolithic structure based, placed 15 feet apart, does seem to me to be excessive when we are already concerned as a town about the size of residential structures. Now, several of the condominium units, it seems to me, will need to be placed close to the property line of Veterans Field, just by virtue of there being, well, the requirement for space. Well, there are no elevation drawings for any of the documents or plans that have been provided, but it looks to me as if there may be as much as a 20-foot rise in elevation from the ball field to where the housing units will be. And with the units rising another 30 feet above grade, they'll loom over the ball field at roughly the height of the ball field lighting. And it suggests to me an ongoing issue with the residents of such buildings with such intense lighting from the ball field lighting so close to the units. Now, but without a specific proposal to evaluate, it's not possible for me certainly to assess whether the density, which is 18 units per acre, other than to say that this does seem to be a location where increased density is a desirable or acceptable outcome. However, there's no quid pro quo here for the town being asked to give up an extraordinary benefit of being able to increase density such as this, but with there being absolutely no guarantee that the Montomois Theater will ever continue or certainly not into the future. And it's already been raised too, that the various exclusions, the parking setbacks and others zoning requirements that are in the overlay district have really no specificity nor limitations on what could potentially be brought forward. I certainly recognize that a final plan would need to come forward before permits were done. But I go back to my feeling that the enthusiasm of myself, as well as colleagues and others with whom I've spoken in the town, is the enthusiasm about retaining and nurturing and the Montomois Theater. And there seems to be no assurance, as I said, in any of these discussions that there is any college or university that could, one, afford whatever the terms offered to support it would be, or that there would be limitations or consequences if the owners were unable to have a college or university and that the Montomois Theater did not continue to exist. So my last comment is that my conclusion is, notwithstanding the concept which I supported with no specificity when first presented to the planning board, that the overlay district should never have been presented to us until there was a specific plan to assess. And with no guarantee by the owners that any university stands ready to operate the theater, as we all hope will be possible, there's no basis for the town to grant the owners the, what I consider unprecedented, right to build high-end condos for, that are certainly not in accordance with the overall housing objectives of the town as expressed in the strategic, long-range strategic plan and other boards of the town. So those are my comments and questions.
This is Catherine. Thank you, Warren. Very clearly stated. And so now I will ask Tom Gagin if you have comments or any questions for Mr. Ford.
Catherine, I do. Tom Gagin speaking. I want to say, just for the brevity of it, is that what Warren just expressed is about 99.9% of my concerns. I've heard some feedback. What is troubling me in terms of initial support is that what I'm hearing now has becoming quite, for me, has become quite confusing. And what confuses me in terms of the overall concept is I can't figure out what the head of the dog is and where the tail is. I don't know if the condominiums and the development of the residential area is really the body of this and the tail is the theater. My concerns about the theater in terms of any guarantees at all is that right now with what's taking place within our country, within the world, is this pandemic is putting a lot of financial stress on universities and colleges. So I don't know if they're going to collectively be able to come forward with a plan for arts and theater in this particular structure, which may take several years for it to be straightened out, certainly financially. So that's one of the concerns I have. The apartments, are they going to be held, what, who's going to have the ownership of the apartments? Are they going to be sold as condos? They're going to be affordable? They're going to be held in individual ownership? I think they mentioned that there's going to be some deed restrictions to those units, which is fine. And the multifamily units, as Warren has pointed out, that financially really, I think, is the body of the dog. And the tail being that we may, meaning a developer, find someone in the future to be able to do the theater. So my general support or initial support is waning rapidly from what I thought was a great concept. But the concept seems to have evolved to something that I don't really want to support at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Let's go to Bob Dubus. If you have comments or questions for Mr. Ford.
Bob Dubus here. At the moment, I'm going to be rather reserved in my questions and comments. Most of the previous speakers have hit upon what I would say is the head of the nail. And so I'm just going to sit back and listen to the rest. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dubus. And Bob Werchafter.
Yeah, this, Bob Werchafter, I'm pretty much in agreement with my colleagues. I, just to say something that hasn't been said rather than repeat everything else, it's hard for me to understand why we need an overlay when the connection between the two purposes here is so weakly tied together. It seems to me that the weak, that weakness speaks to dealing with each parcel on its own and its own intended use. And the only reason that we all talked about an overlay was the protection and the revenues that could be generated from the multifamily to support the theater. And I just don't see where that exists in this overlay in the way it's stated now. So I'm pretty much in agreement with everyone else that's spoken before.
Thank you, Bob. And Roger Griffin, do you have comments or questions for Mr. Ford?
Combination of both, real quickly. And I don't want to keep, everything so far is like spot on. I mean, I agree with, I had same, not say confusion as Art happened, not knowing, maybe, I don't know what the, I don't, I have questions, but I'm not sure maybe the question, the right question, I'm not sure what page we're on. Same thing, Warren. Again, I guess I see the same thing. It's, I guess it's not, I guess this is the best way I'm trying to, I'm new to this, but at the same time, I guess I know what I feel, I know what I think. I think the whole, I think the enthusiasm for this whole project and the glue to this was the Montomois Theater. And I think that's what we all were looking for, assuming, and thought maybe we would be a lot further with how that fits into that. I think what I saw with, this is an example, if we were looking at the, I thought when I was reading this about the theater and what we've even, in what I've been reading, things like describing dormitory apartments. Well, yeah, the dormitory apartments, they're great, but that's considering or assuming that maybe it's, we're going to have the same theater with the same format and with the same arrangement as we had with, you know, University of Ohio. But at the same time, if that's not the case, we don't know what we're doing with the theater, maybe there wouldn't be any dorm apartments. But if there were dorm apartments and we're only doing that for 10 weeks for the summer and that was going to be closed, and I'd be asking who, and who are going to be renting those apartments during the winter when we shut the theater down and everybody goes back to wherever they go to. I guess I'm feeling like, I really feel that the glue with the Montomois, and I guess I'm not getting the impression or the feeling that anyone involved this project has reached out to the community that is so ever passionate about getting the Montomois back. And I think if we had to probably get a group of 1,000 people to lay bricks and shingle the place, it would probably happen in a minute. That's the type of enthusiasm. And I think that's why we were so fortunate to get people to sign the, sign the survey. Because I think that's, and I don't, I don't see where, I don't know, I don't, I feel the same way. I'm not really ready yet. I'm not comfortable at all. The only other thing, real quickly, I thought about the, when we talked about the label condominiums, I had the same concerns about when you take down the shrubbery and the landscape, are they, are they going to be staring at us as you go up Depot Road? I also had one thing with so many of the garden apartments. I also had one thing with so many of the garden apartments, and we, we're, I can't understand where people are going to put this storage. I mean, at some point, even though you're not buying a condo or living in a condo that has a garage, I don't know what you're going to do with all your summer things if they run something, lockers or something on the property. And I think now's the time to plan it because we're, you know, the land spaces at a premium in the project. So I guess, yeah, I guess I feel, I guess I'm, with everybody that's spoken so far, I'm sort of feeling like, agree, 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 and I still have my reservations, a lot of reservations. That's it.
Thank you, Roger. This is Catherine Halpern. I would like to make a couple of comments. Again, speaking not as the chair, but as a board member, I would like to say that in general, I agree with the comments of my colleagues. I think what we have here is a kind situation that, I think it's been said, but I'll say it again, that the general concept of bringing back the Monomoy Theater is what everyone supports, but the details of how to do that, I think, needs some work, if I could say that. And what we're looking at here is a proposed bylaw amendment, and I think Mr. Ford actually did express it quite well, that bylaws don't design the site, but they give parameters within which any design or any plan for that site can go forward. So this overlay district, I think, has certain parameters in it, but I think what I'm hearing from my colleagues on the board is that in a sense, those parameters are not specific and defined enough to offer guarantees that what will occur on that site is the intended result. Because the intended result is that whatever else happens, that the Monomoy Theater will come back. And as I'm reading this, if I could just point this out, the sentences about the restoration and redevelopment of the historic main house and theater building just say that. They just say the restoration and redevelopment of the historic main house. It does not say that there must be or shall be the re-implementation or re, you know, reorganization of the theater as a use of that main house. So I'm reading this, that given this proposed bylaw amendment, that a potential that could occur, that although the dwelling units are conditioned upon the redevelopment of the main house, it's just the restoration and redevelopment. It doesn't say that the theater has to start again. So I do agree that as a use, that that has to be the use. So I agree with my colleagues in that, in some sense, we're looking at a bylaw amendment that allows certain things, but maybe the allowances are not specified enough to guarantee the result that we're actually looking for. So maybe that's best, I have a lot of specific points, but maybe in a nutshell, that's what's best to say right now, before we go on with our public hearing proceedings. I do want to mention to everyone at this point, if I might, that we're very fortunate tonight to have our town council for the town of Chatham, Attorney Costello is joined into the meeting. And I may further on in the proceedings, Mr. Costello, ask you for some comments about how we might approach further specifying or tightening up the language in the proposed bylaw amendment that might better guarantee the results that seem to be favored by the planning board and the community. So with that being said, I'd like to go on to the next step of the public hearing procedures, and that would be public statements in favor of the application. So I will ask for any non-board members, citizens of the town of Chatham, if you are connected to the call and you would like to make a statement in favor of the application. If you could state your name and I will recognize you, and then you will be able to speak. I'll give everyone a minute or so, in case you're on mute or have difficulty with your So I'm asking for public statements in favor of the application. I don't hear from anyone. So the next step is that I will begin to read the correspondence into the record, and this is all correspondence we've received by email or delivery, and there's quite a bit of it. So I'm going to ask everyone to bear with me. So the first letter is from Virginia Nickerson of North Chatham. "I studied the proposed development project for 776 Main Street, and I have some concerns. One, I am not sure if there is a guarantee that there will be a Monomoy Theater, but if there is, will the two buildings that will house the Monomoy Theater and actors be purchased by a nonprofit which will own the two buildings outright? Two, if now or in the future, the Monomoy Theater does not continue, what will happen to the two buildings? Will the present owners be allowed to convert them to more dwellings for sale? Three, when the project is completed, will the overlay be removed as part of the plan? If not, why not? Removing it immediately after completion would be one less thing to vote on at a town meeting. Four, will there be any workforce or affordable housing units? Will there be a deed restriction as such on any of the dwellings? I am not in favor of this development because I believe it is too massive. We have been systematically trying to remove overlays in our town, and now we are being asked to build up and out beyond the zoning limits in hopes that we may still have our wonderful theater. Thank you, Ginny Nickerson." The next letter is from Peter Farber. "Regarding the proposed zoning bylaw amendment submitted by Alexandra Properties LLC, again, if I could ask everyone connected to the call to kindly mute your audio, mute your audio on your computer or on your telephone, and please turn off your videos. Thank you." Again, this is continuing with a letter from Peter Farber. "I write this letter in opposition to the petition of Alexandra Properties LLC to amend Section Four of the Chatham Zoning Bylaw by adding a new overlay district to be known as the Main Street Theater Overlay District. Although Alexandra Properties LLC owns no land in Chatham, it appears to be closely aligned with Chatham Productions LLC, which purchased the adjoining properties at 776 Main Street and 70 Depot Road in September 2019. I request that the board take into consideration the points raised herein in preparing its report and recommendation to the town meeting as required by GLC 48, five, third paragraph. Point number one, a proposed zoning amendment that is submitted by petition should be presented at an annual town meeting, not a special town meeting called only for that purpose. I am not against citizen petition zoning articles. To the contrary, in years past, I have submitted quite a few of my own. However, my petitions all sought to have the proposed amendments considered at an annual town meeting. This allowed the staff and members of the planning board to consider the proposed amendments over the course of several months. Unless there is a history of a planning board dragging its feet on a proposed amendment, or there is a showing by the petitioner that an emergency exists, I see no reason to force the Board of Selectmen to call a special town meeting for a single article. The cost to the town and inconvenience to the voters weigh heavily against such action. This is especially true when the petitioner is an off-Cape developer with no connection to Chatham, other than its recent purchase of a parcel of real estate. Secondly, as a former member of the Chatham Planning Board, it has been my experience that a proposed zoning amendment is immensely improved when it receives the full and careful consideration of the staff and board members. The most recent example is the accessory dwelling bylaw. I don't think anyone who was involved in that process would contest the fact that the finished product was much better than the first iteration. Before moving on to the second point, I wish to add that Chatham is very fortunate to have an excellent town planner who has shown the ability to guide the process when she is given the opportunity to do so. By petitioning the town meeting to act directly on the article, the petitioner seeks to avoid that process. As voters, we lose the opportunity to gain from her expertise. I do not mean to denigrate the voters who signed the petition. All of us who sign petitions from time to time do so with the implicit reservation of rights to further consider the matter as we acquire increased knowledge on the subject. The only vote that counts is that made on town meeting floor, or in this case, on the baseball field. Point number two, the article is in essence spot zoning, although carefully framed to avoid that designation. The classic definition of spot zoning is the singling out of one parcel of land for different treatment than that accorded to similar surrounding land indistinguishable from it in character, all for the economic benefit of the owner of the parcel in question. The petition article was no doubt crafted by a professional in the field to avoid the spot zoning nomer. The classic definition of spot zoning, oh, I'm sorry, the choice of an overlay district is significant. An expert in zoning law in Massachusetts has noted that there is not a single case where an overlay district has been invalidated as spot zoning, Broukowski Mark, Massachusetts Land Use and Planning Law, page 92, Third Edition, 2011. "As illustrated below, the person who drafted the proposed amendment was careful to emphasize what may be the single positive aspect of the zoning change, while glossing over the many negative aspects of the proposed amendment, all of which benefit only the developer." Point number three, the proposed zoning amendment applies to two adjoining parcels of land, which were owned by Elizabeth E. Baker and her family since the 1950s. The name for the overlay district was obviously chosen to appeal to the voter's sensitivities regarding the Monomoy Theater, a much-loved institution in Chatham, which the Baker-Stindler families avidly supported. Those who signed the petition undoubtedly focused on the save-the-Monomoy-theater aspect of the proposal. The purpose of this letter is to focus on the less salutary aspects of the proposed zoning amendment as outlined below. Point number three, should the proposed amendment be adopted, the zoning applicable to these two parcels and no other parcels of land would permit the construction of thirty-two, now that's, if I could interject, the applicant has changed that to twenty-four, residential condominium units in eight, the applicant has changed that to six, buildings, all of which buildings could be thirty feet in height. Note also that the proposed amendment allows the developer to place all of the buildings containing condominium units on a separate lot, and permits the developer to convey that lot to an entity different from the entity that will own the land on which the theater and the pertinent structures are located. The proposed amendment further allows for waiver of parking requirements, lot coverage, and green area requirements. The developer states in its proposal that each condominium unit can contain up to fourteen-hundred square feet of finished-floor area. The developer refers to the condominium units as right-sized and designed for purchase by individuals of fifty-five years or older, although there is no restriction of that sort proposed. Undoubtedly, the units will be affordable to very few Chatham residents, regardless of their age. The developer assures us that the thirty-two condominium units will add a housing component that is currently limited in Chatham. Most assuredly, given the density that is permitted under the current zoning bylaw, which limitations have been in place since at least 1987, a purchaser who wishes to reside in a development of the density allowed under the proposed amendment has few, if any, choices in Chatham. The developer assures us, however, that this unique housing opportunity will allow empty nesters to downsize from their current properties, which will in turn launch these existing homes for the next generation of families. Wishful thinking, question mark, not at all, but the people who will be purchasing these condominium units will undoubtedly be seeking the highest price possible for their existing homes. Ask yourself, will the average citizen of Chatham benefit from the addition of high-end downtown condominiums to the extensive high-end housing stock that already exists in Chatham? Point number four, the developer holds out the carrot that any application for a special permit to construct the thirty-two condominium units will include plans, quote, "plans for the restoration and redevelopment of the existing structures on the theater property." The developer informs us that those plans are in early design phases. It is not evident from these words that the developer wants the zoning changed first, then it will tell us what is proposed for the theater buildings. This leads to the ultimate question, quote, "What assurance does the town have that the theater buildings will be available to college programs on financial terms that the colleges can afford?" There is nothing in the proposed amendment that provides even a hint that the Monomoy Theater will be provided with sufficient resources to make it a viable operation in the future. And if the theater fails, the town is stuck with thirty-two, and if I may interject, now changed to twenty-four, condominium units on a separate parcel of land, and the developer will have taken his profit and moved on to the next project. Point number five, the amendment should not be recommended by the planning board because there is already in place in Chatham's zoning bylaw and the zoning bylaw of every other municipality in Massachusetts, a provision that addresses situations like this. It is the variance procedure set forth in GLC 48, ten. "The legislature provides every landowner which is confronted with circumstances which make its property unique and different from others in the same zoning district the opportunity to make changes to its property. Chatham is blessed with a zoning board of appeals comprised of competent and fair-minded individuals. This is the route Alexandra Properties LLC should be following. The filing fee is, I believe, two hundred and fifty dollars, with a small additional cost for the legal advertising. This is obviously far less than what the town will spend in calling a special town meeting. Thank you for your consideration of these five points. I encourage the board to recommend disapproval of the proposed bylaw amendment. Very truly yours, Peter Farber." The next letter is from Alan Rust, and I'll just begin. He states, "As a new full-time resident of Chatham and a registered Massachusetts voter, I have been following with great interest and not a small degree of emotional concern the controversy surrounding the planned development of the property at 776 Main Street, where the Monomoy Theater is located. I am certainly hoping that the operation of the theater can be resurrected, but I fear the plans being presented to the town at this time may not be practical. Having served as the artistic director of the Monomoy Theater for thirty-seven years, and as a member of the Summer Theater Company for ten years prior to that, I am very aware of what this theater needs to maintain a successful artistic presence in the community. The plans I have seen for the development of the property, while necessary for the new owner, to receive a satisfactory return on his investment, do not include what I believe to be many essential elements required to function as a residential theater. If the new owners believe they can make a profit by charging rent to a university or other organization, I believe they will find it very hard to succeed financially. In the meantime, the town will have relinquished the carefully-designed zoning laws that allow Chatham to retain its charm. I believe that when the many followers and patrons of the Monomoy Theater read that the theater will be back if the zoning is changed, they are being misled. Before making these changes, I suggest the town asks for a much more detailed plan from the owners, showing exactly how the Monomoy Theater can successfully function in their proposed development of the property. As an active member of the Friends of the Monomoy Theater Incorporated, I feel the development of this property without significant... without significant detailed plans for the theater could result in disappointment for both the owners and for the many townspeople who would like to see the theater working again." And that is from Alan Rust. Uh, the next correspondence. Excuse me, one moment. Is from Roz and Bill Coleman of North Chatham. So this is from Roz and Bill Coleman. We believe, uh, this is addressed to Bob Wirtschaft and Peter Kukolos. Uh, we believe both of you serve on or advise the planning board. We view the planning board as being charged with keeping Chatham historic with a diverse population and viable housing and commerce. We presume that you have both read the email from Alan Rust, the revered longtime Monomoy Theater Director. He warns Chatham to take another look at the theater district plans to be decided at the town meeting next Saturday. We agree with Alan for the following reasons. One, many of us love the Monomoy Theater because it is an educational, cultural, and entertainment vehicle that has never been about making a profit. Subpoint one, the new owner has not engendered trust by outbidding the Monomoy not-for-profit group. Two, the new owner remained anonymous for a long time. Three, the new owner did not consult with the Monomoy Theater principals until he needed a downtown location for his petition signing. And four, the new owner's argument seems to run to his making a profit and needing these changes to make a profit. Main point two. How will allowing our prime open space near downtown for condos for an older affluent customer who can pay market value address our workforce housing issue? Three, how can a for-profit theater district be available for a not-for-profit educational institution like the Monomoy Theater? I hope. Excuse me. Excuse me. I hope. Ally, I may have to ask you to substitute for a while.
Okay, let me just get to it. Hold on one moment.
Sorry. I'll, I'll recover in a minute. This is from the Coleman's.
Okay, I'm sorry, I found it.
Okay. So it's from the Coleman's after their point three. I hope we give this application. A hard look. Thank you.
Yep. Um, okay, so point three. How can a for-profit theater district be available for a not-for-profit educational in- institution like Monomoy Theater? I hope we can give this app- application a hard look. The new owner claims to be all about maintaining history. That should be, that should include designing for a theater training institution like the Monomoy Theater that many Chatham citizens and visitors loved. We also need workforce housing. Chatham has funds available to assist the new owner if the owner changes his plan to be more in keeping with the history he said he wanted to maintain. Please bring your expertise to bear on providing information to voters. With respect, Roz and Bill Coleman, six hundred Orleans Road, North, Chatham.
Thank you. Um, the ones I have remaining, Ally, are David Oppenheim and Gay Murdoch, and then, of course, the Westgates and.
Okay, no problem.
And Sherry Bush.
Okay. All right, um, so this is from Gay Murdoch. Hello, all. Please read the below letter as written by David Oppenheim, the Friends of Monomoy Theater Board, as opposed to the zoning overlay district as submitted by the developer. The Board of F O M T would like the people to know the full context of the plan before voting. It is not in the best interest of the theater, Gay. Um, and this was also from David Oppenheim. Read update description from proponent. No longer twenty-four units, now thirty-two. The size of the buildings can be built on fifty-six-hundred, or thousand, square feet. One and one-third acres is equivalent to four brick blocks on the corner of Main Street and Chatham Bar's Ave. Twenty percent larger than the two hotel restaurant buildings combined of the Wayside Inn and two and a half times the size of our fir- of our new fire station. This is Boston density and must be defeated at this October third special town meeting. Even the Monomoy Theater group opposes as they know the renovated theater cannot function, in quotes, "renovated theater" cannot functionally work. Please forward this information to anyone you know that will realize how bad this proposal is and will attend the meeting to defeat this absurd proposal. That was from David Oppenheim.
Thank you. And then, do you want me to continue, Ally? I think I could pick up with Sherry Bush now.
Okay, that's fine, and if you want, I can, uh, read Michael Westgate as the last one.
All right, I think that's good. It's, so th- those are the last two, is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
All right. Uh, okay, so this is from Sherry Bush. Uh, although you may hear from each of them independently, we wanted to make sure you are aware of the concerns and objections raised by the Friends of the Monomoy Theater by Alan Rust, longtime artistic director of the theater, as well as by local developer David Oppenheim. These concerns and objections are included in the email stream below. As local full-time Chatham residents, registered voters in Chatham, and theater-goers and theater lovers, we too are extremely concerned about the proposed project. As presented, the plans do not take into account and actually seem to disregard the requirements of operating a live theater venue and certainly do not recognize the specific needs of the college theater program we have loved for so many years. One could conclude that Alexandra Properties is thinking of the theater last as an afterthought to a larger residential real estate project. The overlay district should first and foremost be to preserve the Monomoy Theater, not to become a real estate development for the benefit of the developer. Please ask for a more, for more detail from Alexandra Properties regarding the plans for the Monomoy Theater, reject the current proposal, and take more time before deciding this very important issue. Thank you for your consideration on this very important matter. And this is from Sherry and Walter Bush, uh, who are on Stage Harbor Road in Chatham. And Ally, I'll let you read the last one from the Westgates.
Okay, great, thanks, Catherine. Ms. Sabatino, I'll attempt to participate in the planning board's public hearing this afternoon. Whether I'm successful or not, I would like this statement to be made part of the record. The zoning change is to allow for the theater and the condos, but without requiring either. Almost everyone liked to see the theater in operation, but it will not, but it will not likely resemble the Monomoy Theater operation we've known over the past fifty years. No university or other nonprofit is involved. The developer should perhaps be required to come up with a partner. The Orphium offers insights into how a nonprofit can operate. Chatham desperately needs housing, especially rental, for needy year-round families at both ends of the age spectrum. But the proposed development of up to thirty condos limit to, quote, "over fifty-fives" does not address those needs, even though several of them will be "affordable", in quotes, with a legally defined capital A. It is reported that the condos are to be marketed for sale in the million-dollar range, well out of the range of year-round market that Chatham Three-Sixty-Five and others seek to serve. They would likely be brought, bought by affluent people for their own use, for investment purposes, and for rent to other affluent short-term users. The argument will be made that the income for sale of these units is needed to subsidize the theater. The danger is that, after a few unsuccessful seasons, the theater and associated buildings would be declared uneconomical and then be converted to condos or other non-theater use. What guarantees could the de- developer offer? Perhaps a substantial performance bond should be required. There are ways to develop rentals, both, in quotes, "affordable" and "workforce housing", using state and federal funds as well as local, public, and private funds. Other Cape towns are currently doing so. This might site accommodate, might this site accommodate such? Is the proposed plan the highest and best use of the site from the perspective of the town as well as the developer? The plan provides minimum parking for the condos and only about half of the parking required for the theater. The developer proposes to bus people from other parking sites around town for performances, which seems unlikely. The developer is showing no patience, pushing the town into un- an unwanted special town meeting during the COVID-nineteen pandemic, when other priorities, including the proposed senior center, have been pushed back to regular town meeting next May. In doing so, he's putting his own financial interests ahead of the health interests of those risking attending the special town meeting. Why the rush? The developer seems to want to get started on this lucrative condo, on his lucrative condos while the housing market is hot. Would it make sense to reject the zoning changes, changes as proposed? List the requirements the developer should seek to meet and invite him to come back at, to regular town meeting like everyone else? The zoning change is, of course, just the first of various town approvals the developer will need prior to construction, but it is the most critical and will set the foundation for what will and will not be built there. I suggest the planning board convene a couple of meetings at which the town's priorities for use of these strategic and valuable parcels of land should be used, and in the meantime, vote against the current rezoning proposal. Michael Westgate, Cedar Street, Chatham.
Thank you, Ally. So I think that is all the correspondence, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, we will go to the next step of our public hearing, which is public statements opposing the application. So I will ask if there's anyone from the public who's connected to the, uh, connected to the meeting, either by computer or by phone, who would like to make a statement at this time in opposition to the application. I'll wait a minute or so, in case you're on mute.
Hello, this is David Oppenheim.
Yes, hello, Mr. Oppenheim. Please go ahead.
Okay. In January two thousand nineteen, a group of Monomoy Theater supporters bid on the subject property with the goal of restoration of the theater and reworking of the site to make it more functional. The group was fully aware of the GB-two zoning, and though challenging, felt it could be accomplished, it could be accomplished. Preliminary ideas included a housing component on the Depot Road section, year-round rent, year-round rentals, or perhaps some sales, but within the zoning, within the zoning rules with, uh, and, or perhaps with ZBA relief if appropriate. Also considered were site revisions to ease traffic issues. The group was not successful, but hoped the buyer would proceed in a positive manner. The new owner brought, bought the property fully knowing the zoning and indicated its proficiency in this type of restoration and development, including the generous tax credits available for preservation and could and would make it work. I guess not. Apparently, there's not enough profit in what's allowed, even with the potential ZBA relief. Its proposal would create an extremely dense development at market rate, said to be a million or more, not affordable, not moderate. Proponents, the proponent points to the footprint of thirty-four hundred square feet and calls it reasonable as to coverage. Yet the total size of each building includes a second story, which would exceed, and make the whole, the building totally exceeds six thousand square feet, what most would consider a mansion, or what some people call McMansions. Or in this case, six mansions of one-point-five acres, or one mansion per one-quarter acre. Yes, the theater would be restored, but in parentheses, it would be, it could be as little as just meeting building codes. But with little parking and little chains of function, little chance of functioning, which is why Monomoy Theater opposes, traffic flow would not be improved, but made much worse. This proposal would be amongst the densest, if not the densest, development in Chatham. The owners would make on market-rate condos millions of dollars. My estimate is fif- my estimate is fifteen million or more, with no reasonable expectation of a functioning theater. Not long ago, the town rejected the idea of one small affordable house on the town's Depot Lot, Depot Street, Depot Road Lot. This is the lot abutting the property. And that was because it would not be in keeping with the Veterans Field area. The proponents now want to put six-six-thousand-square-foot buildings overlooking Veterans Field. It's an egregious attempt to circumvent the GB-two requirements of this part of Chatham. Developers often seek relief from zoning restrictions and do so through the ZBA and have to prove that the request is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. This proposal, we should, I'm sorry. We should not allow the carrot of the theater restoration to destroy our zoning goals. This proposal wants to circumvent this process, and this proposal, in my opinion, would meet the definition of substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. It should not be considered, and the owners should, should work within the rules of GB, GB-two, but sell the property to a party that will respect the Chatham zoning. I want to just end by saying that, uh, I've been a developer, builder, and property owner in this town since mid, mid-seventies, and this is probably the worst proposal I've ever seen. We have a planning board that's done some great things. You're very organized, and I think, as you've acknowledged in your own comments, that the carrot of the theater was right there in front of you, and now the details are coming out about this proposal and the lack of guarantees of anything functioning. And I know that this board will work, as it always has, as it did with the, uh, hous- housing, uh, different housing issues that it's looking at West Chatham, will do consideration, and I strongly urge you to put this off and not consider it for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Are there, this is Catherine Helper, and again, I'll ask if there are any other members of the public who would like to make a statement in opposition to the application?
Elaine Gibbs.
Gloria Freeman.
All right, um, Ms. Gibbs, would you go ahead?
Yes, thank you. Uh, I think it's really unfortunate and unfair that this is being brought before the town during a pandemic. Uh, it is putting us in a fire drill mode. Uh, it bears no resemblance to what we had all thought was going to happen about a year ago when it first hit the press that, uh, someone had supposedly rescued the theater. Uh, I haven't met one person who's in support of this, but I don't, and I think it's really unfair that they have to make a decision to, uh, uh, go outside at a special town meeting that the town is paying for, for a private development project. Uh, or we could see that downtown area changed forever and not accomplish our objective, which was to save the theater. I, I agree with everything that Warren Chain said. Uh, everybody said, but Warren Chain actually just nailed it on every single point. This is a massive, massive project. The bylaw is way too broad, too much is missing. Uh, this was supposed to be out saving the theater, not just restoring it, but there, the language in there is so, um, open to interpretation, and a lot of, you could drive a truck through it, uh, that the theater buildings themselves, which should be usable, some of it is going to be used as a wine bar. Some could be used as dormitory for students, actors, or it could be affordable housing, and some could be retail space. That's not what we were looking for. That's not what the Friends of Monomoy were looking for. And then, uh, it was also presented as fifty-five-plus and needed housing. Uh, it's not needed housing when there are million dollars, uh, to begin with. I'm not sure how they can enforce fifty-five-plus unless you're actually calling it a senior living community. I, I think it's probably discriminatory to say you have to be fifty-five. Uh, but if it turned out to be that, there's nothing to say they can't sublet it. I see these million-dollar-plus properties as being expensive, high-end investment properties for non-residents who will rent them out in the summer. And I would just point to what we have gone through for the Council on Aging and the due diligence we have done. That is a ten-thousand-square-foot building. And how many meetings have there been, uh, to do traffic studies, to do parking studies, to consider the amount of asphalt, to talk about the density, uh, and the neighborhood compatibility, and clear-cutting? I don't think people understand. I don't think people understand that what's going to happen when you drive down Main Street and you look at the Monomoy Theater, you're going to be able to see Depot Road and a bunch of buildings because there's not going to be any green there anymore. And they will hover, tower over Veterans Field. The exit is on Depot Road. Our elementary school is there. Our fire station is there. People that go to Veterans Field are there. There should be detailed traffic studies. This is going to be for the developer, a windfall of $30 million. If these things are going for a million plus apiece, plus all the tax advantages they're going to get if they stick in a few affordable housing units, I think that this is unfortunate, that this is being thrust on us, and I hope the planning board will vote against this moving forward. I guess we're going to have to have a special town meeting anyway, which I think is unfortunate. This is not what we expected. This is not ever going to be a theater with this proposal. And I also agree, I believe it was Warren who said, someone's, no, I think it was Mr. Worschafter, that these are two separate projects. Why are they tied together? There is no link between the two. This is a development project that is using the theater to get the development project. So I hope you will vote against it, and I hope the board selectmen will, and I hope town meeting will. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gibbs. And I think Gloria, you were next. Would you like to go ahead, Gloria Freeman?
Yes, hi, thanks. I'm Gloria Freeman, and I encourage you to not recommend this article to Saturday's special town meeting for numerous reasons already mentioned, but especially because no plans have been provided as to what it will look like, as well as the density of this project. And this project, as mentioned before, does nothing to achieve attainable housing or affordable because our zoning bylaw allows a monetary contribution to be made in lieu of units. Another reason not mentioned is the fact that quasi-residential condos in our downtown is able to be built to GB requirements and not those requirements for residential areas. Seems like a lucrative way to get around what voters wanted to see in residential development in Chatham. Also, it is stated that the area within the development plan devoted to the condos shall be shown as a separate lot and may be held in ownership different than the remaining lot or lots within the overlay district. So the development of the condos can be conveyed to someone else to develop, not Alexandra Properties. It appears this is a profit-making project which is not beneficial in any way to the theater or to the town, and thank you.
Thank you, Gloria. And again, I'll ask if there's anyone else in the public who's connected by computer or by phone who would like to make a statement in opposition to this application. All right, there being none, the next step in our public hearing procedures is rebuttal. Mr. Ford, did you want to take the opportunity to rebut any of the points that have come up?
Yes, Madam Chair, just very briefly, and I know Greg Clark, my client, the owner of the property, would like to address the board as well at this stage of the proceedings.
All right. Would you like to speak first, or Mr. Clark, go right ahead?
I think I'd like to have Mr. Clark be able to address the board to make sure that that happens. So if he's there and he can hear, and then I'll rebut after that.
All right. Mr. Clark, this is Catherine Helfern. Are you connected to the call? Did you want to rebut or speak on behalf of your project?
Good evening, Ms. Chair. How are you?
Very good. Please go ahead. Yes, we can hear you. Please go ahead, Mr. Clark.
Okay. I'd like to address, there's been a lot of discussion in the past week from people. We've been hearing a lot of different things, and I want to clarify some of the misconceptions. First of all, when we did our first submission to the planning board, if you go back to the record, you will see, we did have a site plan drawn showing the layout of the buildings, showing the size of the buildings in relation to the properties, show density. That was discussed prior to the first vote that the planning board did. The concern today seems to be one of three different items. Either will there be a theater? The density is too much? Or what are we doing about affordable housing? And I tell you that all three of those items were addressed when we had the first round of meetings with the planning board, and they were adjusted, as Attorney Ford stated, in discussions back and forth. The issue of the affordable is very clear. You know, we put up the offer to either make the housing above the existing Taylor Home.
Yes, this is Catherine. I'm going to ask everyone again, if you're not Mr. Clark or myself, could you kindly mute the audio on your computer or on your phone? And also, could you kindly turn off the video if you're connected by computer? Mr. Clark, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. And we write right into the language of the proposed overlay that we will meet with the different boards and discuss whether or not it is affordable housing. And let me just clarify something on that also. I believe the language says three two-bedroom units of affordable housing above that location. And we say four dormitory housing. Because as we've spoken to different theater groups in the past eight months on running the property for us, they have, some of them have said that they want X amount of housing, or some of them have said that they can deal without having the housing on site. I want to be very clear that when we purchased the property, we purchased the trademark Monomoy Theater. It's always been our intention to run a theater there. No other group that uses the name Monomoy Theater speaks for our organization. My wife and I, we have, our oldest son is an actor. He has worked over the years in many different theaters, including some summer start theaters. What we saw when we were shown the property for the summer, the condition of that theater, as most people know, it was shut down by the Board of Health. There are violations everywhere. It needed a significant amount of money to just restore the theater. However, the theater as it was run recently, when it was closed two years ago, did not meet the standards of today's theater. We know this because we've been involved in the construction of three live performing arts centers. So we come to the table with this deal knowing more than most people on the opposing side tonight want to tell people. We're dedicated to the theater. We have a plan to work with an existing theater group that uses equity actors, not student actors. They mix them together, and they will run the program. Our plan was to utilize profits from the sale of the residential units to pay for the reconstruction cost of the theater, the reconstruction cost of the Washington Taylor property, so that we did not charge rent to the theater group. And at the same time, as we've been saying since the beginning, we propose that those other nine months of the year that the Monomoy Theater was black, was dark, we would allow the school system to have full use of it at no charge. Charitable organizations in Chatham would have free use of it at no charge. It was meant to be a real community theater. So our plan was different than the previous group that ran the theater. The issue of historic, which I haven't heard anybody mention at all this evening, except for the fact that we're going to be getting an incredible amount of tax credits from it. If they've ever done any tax credit work before, they realize that there's a 20% tax credit on the dollars that you spend only on the renovation of what the National Park Service considers a historic building. So the site work, all those things, do not go into the mix. And I also heard this evening that people say we're going to make between 15 and 30 million dollars on the sale of the condos. Well, I can tell you that our pro forma says that we're selling the condos at less than, all of them together, at less than $23 million. So if anybody understands development in construction, they understand that there's a cost of purchasing the land, there's a dramatic cost for the renovation of the theater and the upgrading of the Washington Taylor House, and then the restroom facilities that have to be put onto the theater because it doesn't meet Board of Health, then the relocation of the scene shop that was going to be utilized as a practice area. So a lot of the things that people are asking questions about weren't meant to be detailed at this point in the game. This was a path for the town to vote to decide, do they want this idea? We understand that this is only an option. There are other options. As one of the gentlemen stated earlier, we can build whatever we want per GB2 in this facility. Everyone needs to understand, that does not mean that a theater has to be there. There is no restriction currently on that site that says a theater has to be in that location. We're offering to put that there. We're not making the type of money that these people want to claim. We are addressing the affordable issue. We will put affordable units up on the front, and we will put affordable units up in the back. Our statement says that. So I think what you have is a lot of individuals who have their own agenda trying to sway the board, but it's interesting, if you just sit back and listen to them, you can see their agenda. They're either pro one, two, or three. They're not looking at the big picture. We've looked at the big picture. We've been residents of the town for 20 years, coming to town for 25 years. We looked at it that this is an opportunity to create a cultural center for the town to use, not just the wealthy, but all the people who could now bring their childrens there and see community shows and other things that would be put on at no charge because there'd be no debt on the property, and we don't have to charge the groups running theater programs for their use. The previous group that ran the theater operation paid the Steiner family less than, approximately $50,000 per year. Of course, you can't run a facility on that. That is why this facility fell apart. We look at it that we want to create a facility that runs, and we have no problem catering the language to say some of the things that your board asked. Will we build them simultaneously? Yes. We can come up with a guarantee form to show that we'll build them simultaneously. Will the theater open? Yes. As someone said earlier, we can tie the certificate of occupancy to the residential units through the occupancy of the theater. And then the question, the question of will the theater be sustainable? I ask you this. Why isn't the Monomoy Theater there today? It wasn't sustainable under the current program that that group was running. It needs to be changed. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Mr. Ford, did you want to add anything in rebuttal?
Just briefly, I heard all of the comments of the planning board. I appreciate them. That's obviously they're reacting to their reflections on this project since the last time they voted for it, and I understand that. I will say that I'm a bit taken aback about the comments about not having a plan. This is enabling legislation. You don't take a site plan to town meeting. And we did bring in initial concept plan, but this bylaw is simply enabling legislation to allow a plan to be developed and then brought forward to see if it could be permitted under the rules and regulations. Madam Chair, you've indicated there may be some ways that the bylaw could be revised in order to make that happen with more certainty. I understand that. I wish that discussion had started many months ago. It's not as if we didn't work very hard. I know a number of the letters said, gee, you ought to take advantage of Ally and the others in the town and their expertise, and we did. We started last fall, and the product of that was the first bylaw revision that you, proposal that you all endorsed unanimously. So it's unfortunate that all these issues come up at this late date, but I understand the planning board members have a particular point of view, but I think the bylaw, if there are some changes, Madam Chairman, that you think could make it more exacting, then I'm willing to listen to those. Timing is a problem for my client. Obviously, there's a town meeting on Saturday. So if there are suggestions, I'd be happy to hear what they are this evening, if at all possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Again, this is Catherine Helfern. The next step in our public hearing procedures is to again go back to the board and listen to comments. Before we begin that, or as part of that, I would just like to make a couple of statements, if I might. What we're looking at here is a proposed zoning bylaw amendment, which, as Mr. Ford has accurately stated, is enabling legislation. That is, that we're considering a bylaw amendment that simply would lay the parameters, you could say, within which future development or redevelopment can be done and which future development and redevelopment needs to adhere to. It is true to say that a specific site plan is not part of a zoning bylaw amendment. However, in this case, and this is my individual opinion, what I'm hearing from the board and the public is that what we're seeing in the proposed bylaw amendment as it stands is there perhaps is not sufficient definition of what is allowed and not allowed. There's not sufficient specification of what is allowed and not allowed that would guarantee the results that are desired. The main result, it seems to me, that is desired is that the theater will be resurrected again. The language that I'm seeing is that the restoration and redevelopment of the main house and theater building are, that the dwelling units are conditioned on that. So what I'm reading that to be is that the bylaw would only require that the theater building and main house be renovated and redeveloped, not necessarily that a theater is there, something else could be there, some other permitted use. So we're not saying, in response to Mr. Clark and to your wonderful explanation, we're not saying that you won't do it, but what I'm pointing out is that the bylaw, as it's currently worded, at least to me, would allow, doesn't guarantee the result that I think we're looking for, and it would allow other results. So it is true to say that a specific site plan is a separate consideration from this. Specific special permits would be a separate consideration from this, but there seems to be a need that if a zoning bylaw amendment is the legal mechanism, which is the best legal mechanism to accomplish what we want to accomplish there, and I'm not even sure of that at this point, that the wording in the of that at this point, that the wording in the proposed amendment might need to be much more specific. So that's the comment that I'll make. And again, I want to say that our town council is present. Um, I'd like to go through the board members and see if there are additional comments, and then if I may, come back to Attorney Costello and see if you have, uh, any suggestions you would like to make to the, speaking to the point that I've just brought up. Um, but if I could go through the board as a whole, I think it, it just might be a more efficient procedure first. So may I ask Art Spru, do you have any additional comments at this point you'd like to make?
Well, uh, I guess the only thing is, is, um, Warren and a couple others on the board have mentioned that, uh, there wasn't enough information provided as a part of the site plan. And, and I, I think I have a tendency to agree with that. We go to town meeting all the time, even on our own projects for the senior center, with fairly detailed site plans to get an article passed, uh, for changes or approval of, of, uh, a lot of different things. I mean, we funded $75,000 to actually have a plan developed a little bit to show that it's, um, a viable, uh, thing to do and it can be supported. Uh, it requires, you know, if we need to get funding for it and all that, two-thirds vote. So it's not unusual for, for articles to be brought forward with the more detailed information. Uh, very sketchy information was provided associated with the site. And that's what our board deals with, quite frankly. That's why I was asking all the questions that I did. So, um, to me, uh, if you're not willing to do the due diligence upfront and demonstrate that it's viable and a lot of the conditions that you're saying are going to be met can actually be met, then, you know, it, you have to live with the language of the bylaw. And the bylaw is just a little bit too loose the way it's structured right now, very much some of the things that you were saying, Catherine. So I, I, I guess that's the only other thing I wanted to say right now, that, that it's not unusual for us to see a more, more detailed information, even for a proposal like this.
Okay. Thank you, Arthur. Warren Chain, additional comments? Warren, are you connected? Are you on mute?
Yes, I am. I'm connected here. Warren Chain again. Um, I certainly do understand that the planning board is reviewing enabling legislation, but I do think this is an extraordinarily unique situation where the enabling legislation is only being considered actively as a result of the objective of ref- of refurbishing and maintaining the Montomo Theater. Um, it's really a project and is unusual in that sense. I feel, uh, personally on the board that the board has not had the opportunity to provide specific input to amend the proposal that is going to town meeting. This thing has just run away with itself. Um, so there's no opportunity, uh, at this point for us to have discussions with the applicant. Um, that would have clarified, perhaps have, um, caused me to now think differently than I, than I, um, am required to conclude that, um, with there being no, well, without reiterating everything, I see nothing that I've heard which would cause me to suggest that, um, my conclusion is that we, uh, should not support this as the board. That's all.
I'm sorry, would you, Warren, could you repeat your last sentence?
I have heard, seen, heard nothing, uh, from any of the, uh, rebuttals or rebutters that would cause me to think any differently than I had been led to conclude that we, as a board, should not recommend supporting this, uh, applicant request.
Okay. Thank you, Warren. So go to Tom Gagan. Do you have any additional comments?
Tom Gagan, yes, I do, Madam Chair. Uh, I think that the chair's, uh, suggestion, or at least, uh, going in the direction that the chair has suggested, is I'd like to know at some point appropriate, if Town Council, uh, Attorney Costello could give some guidance to the board as to how we could, uh, beef up or strengthen or get into some form of guarantee that what the board is going to support, um, gets to what we all believe is important to the town, and that's a viable theater. So without those, and I hate to use the word guarantee because I'm old enough to know there aren't any guarantees, um, but stronger language, uh, which allow the board to be supportive of this going forward. Uh, right now, uh, I, I'm not comfortable, as Warren has stated, uh, and I've agreed with what Warren has said. So my input is to, uh, hold, uh, my final thoughts, uh, until we're free from Town Council and certainly encourage the chair to engage him, uh, at some appropriate time. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I think what I'd like to do is just go through the rest of the board members, see if there's additional comments, and then I would ask Attorney Costello to engage in the conversation to this point. And I believe Mr. Costello is connected to the call. So, uh, Bob Dubus, can I ask you if you have additional comments?
I would just like to say that, um, most, most of the board has hit upon everything. Uh, but I do want, my personal gut feeling is that I'm in favor of the concept of what's going on here. Uh, like, like the board says, it could be tightened up a little bit, the language could be a little different than what it is, but the concept, I understand the concept and I, and I personally am in favor of the concept. But like the board says, there's not enough information that they have to make, uh, an accurate, um, proposal or, or, or whatever. So, but that's about all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dubus. And Bob Wortschfter?
Yeah, this is Bob Wortschfter. Uh, two very quick points. One is, um, I do think it's important that there be some additional language tying the theater more clearly into the, um, to the plan and, and the support of the theater. And I'm not sure if the, uh, council can, can insert that in, into this now so that it could come before the meeting on, on Saturday. That's one. And the second is, I, I'm a little perplexed by your, um, thinking that we didn't tell you that you should have a clearer site plan. Because if you recall, when you brought this before us, you had a map that just showed a whole bunch of dots in that, uh, development. And we said, that clearly is not going to be sufficient to get the support of us and of the town unless you can lay out in a much more clear fashion exactly how that development is going to look. And so I do, I do remember that very clearly. I remember telling you that, and I, I think that your, um, omission of that i- is going to cost you on Saturday.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Bob. Uh, Roger Griffin, do you have additional comments?
Uh, no, not really, but I, I, Bob just brought up that comment. I, I wasn't even on the board there, but I remember watching that meeting that night. And, uh, Catherine, I remember you making some sort of conflict. We needed, we, there was none of, we, visual is always good, and I think that's what we don't have. We, we haven't had enough visual. We, I don't think we have had enough clarity. Uh, I'm still feeling, no, I don't feel like we can move forward.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Roger. So at this point, um, I would like to engage Attorney Costello. Again, if I could just make a couple of comments, we have a bylaw amendment in front of us. I'm even asking my, and I believe what the intention, what everyone supports is they want to see the Montomo Theater active again. So, uh, and the bylaw in general has the intention that some financial support towards that end will be gained from further development of the property and allowing, making some allowances as to greater density. So loosely put, that's the idea. I'm even asking the question right now, but it may not be the right one. Is a bylaw amendment the best path to achieve this goal? Um, of overlay district? But if it is the path that we choose, and we may not, we may or may not be able to do this tonight, but I'm going to ask Attorney Costello, is there language that can be amended in the bylaw as, bylaw amendment as we have it, that may provide, uh, greater guarantees, greater certainty that, uh, the theater will be, um, implemented with certainty, that some of the issues that have come up regarding the density, that those are addressed, that some of the looser uncertain areas of the bylaw, in the sense it's allowing too much and letting too much of the details be determined by later consideration? So if you wouldn't mind, um, Attorney Costello, if we could have your thoughts on this?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Very interesting discussion tonight. Certainly, the, the whole purpose of the Planning Board Public Hearing, as we know under 48, Section 5, is to ascertain public viewpoints on a, on a proposed bylaw amendment and to, to hear the positions of the board members. And I think that's come across pretty loud and clear tonight. I, I, I think there are deep concerns relative to the proposed bylaw amendment due to, uh, its generalities, if you will, with regard to the theater operations going forward. And there are some other, you know, dimensional issues that have come up tonight. Now, this is also a unique situation to the extent that what we're dealing with is a petition zoning bylaw amendment. Uh, a petitioner can incorporate whatever proposed bylaw amendment it chooses into its proposed article, and the planning board, in its role as the, you know, chief planning agency of the town, can, to some degree, require changes in the text of a proposed zoning bylaw amendment. But it, it has to, uh, stay within the parameters, if you will, of the original intent and, and purpose of, of the bylaw. When you, you, Madam Chair, noted initially the, the, the purpose and intent of the proposed amendment, i- it struck me that the language is pretty clear. It's to encourage the restoration of the existing historic buildings, which comprise the fa- former Montomo Theater, which includes the existing main house, uh, the Washington Taylor House and the existing theater building, while also providing the opportunity to add downtown housing. So nowhere do, as I construe the proposed language of the bylaw amendment, uh, is the petitioner or the applicant, uh, stating that it's, it's intention to continue the operation of, of the Montomo Theater as it previously existed. Certainly, that's the overriding public desire, based on what I've heard here this evening. Uh, however, whether the, the petitioner is willing to go so far as to, uh, agree with the town, if you will, uh, to impose certain restrictions upon the property due to its historic use, to impose certain development, uh, terms and conditions, uh, on the renovations and subsequent use of the theater, uh, is, is unknown. And, and we have to meet and discuss that with the petitioner in order to come up with specific language. I certainly do think there was room for some tightening of some of the language that has been troublesome for many of the speakers here this evening. We, we could impose some phasing, if you will, or some timeframes and deadlines by which the completion of the theater and related building renovations is completed in relation to the development of the, the housing units and the issues of issuance of COs and so forth for housing. That's, as you know, fairly common in, in, in many bylaws where there are mixed uses on various phases of development, housing in particular. I, I think we could work with the developer, uh, or the, uh, the petitioner, I'll call it, in, in that regard to achieve some sort of, uh, certainty or, or more specificity in the proposed, uh, bylaw in that regard. Uh, where things get a little bit, you know, more concerning are, uh, the concepts that I've heard expressed tonight relative to a desire to maintain, uh, the Montomo Theater or the theater buildings within the parameters of a not-for-profit operation, uh, or to be held by, in a certain type of ownership, become somewhat problematic when we're dealing with zoning bylaws. I mean, the courts have long established that, you know, zoning bylaws should not dictate or mandate form of ownership of property. It, the purpose of zoning bylaws is to regulate the, the use of, of, of properties within the town. And we can do that by virtue of use regulations, obviously dimensional regulations, all of which, um, are to some degree applicable within the, the overlay district bylaw we have here, keeping in mind that the underlying, uh, GB2 bylaw requirements will continue to apply to the subject property. So I, I sense that if we had more time, which unfortunately, in the circumstances we're, we're facing right now, we don't have a lot of time, uh, we, we could engage in, in further discussions and try to see if some sort of stipulated language, uh, could be incorporated into the draft bylaw that would, would refine it to some degree. Uh, I'm not sure, to be honest with you, based on what I've heard tonight from members of the board and, and other interested parties, that would, would be able to bridge all of the concerns or all of the questions that have arisen relative to the prospective use of the theater. And, and I'm not sure, quite frankly, that, um, um, addressing all of those concerns would fall within the parameters of, of proper bylaw drafting or, or zoning legislation. So, um, uh, time is short. We, we have a, a town meeting in less than a week. Planning board, you know, would certainly, as a body, have to meet and, and review and be given advance notice of whatever proposed additional changes, um, to the bylaw would be proposed, to the extent that it conditions any recommendation it may make upon those revisions. We could certainly get working on them as soon as possible. I, I could give Attorney Ford a call tomorrow. We could see what we could come up with. But again, uh, because of the, the statutory restrictions and the calling of a petition special town meeting, the planning board period for review and issuing its, its, uh, convening its public hearing and issuing its recommendation has been substantially curtailed by, by the need to schedule the town meeting within 45 days. And, um, accordingly, we find ourselves in a position here tonight where, um, you know, we, we could put our heads together, try to come up with something, but, uh, it's, it's going to be difficult to, uh, come up with substantially revised language for a bylaw and staying within the, the original intent and parameter of the bylaw as envisioned by the petitioner, uh, in advance of a Saturday town meeting.
Okay. I th- thank you, Attorney Costello. Yes. Is there someone wishing to be recognized?
Tom.
Please go ahead.
I don't know if you would or the board could ask the petitioner to withdraw, uh, from the Saturday meeting, uh, certainly based on what Attorney Costello said. Uh, therefore, the board would not be pressed in terms of time, uh, to make a decision that may not be favorable to this development. Uh, it is clear, uh, from, uh, the town folk, uh, that have spoken and from the board that we very much want the theater. So my suggestion would be, uh, do we petition, uh, the applicant to, uh, consider withdrawing from a present town meeting, where we could have more time, uh, to vote favorably for what we believe is the essence of this, uh, development bylaw?
Thank you, Tom. This is Catherine. Um, I'm just going to address some points and I'll ask Ally or Attorney Costello to respond. But what, where I understand where we are in the procedure right now is we are at the final board comments, and usually at this point, we would make some decision, we, and we would need to take a formal vote to close the hearing and enter formal deliberations, and then we would take our f- formal vote on this matter. This is a citizen's petition for a bylaw amendment, a proposed bylaw amendment. So, and again, I'm just going to in- interrupt. So and again, I'm just going to in interrupt. Could I ask everyone who's not speaking to please mute your microphones and also turn off your videos? Uh if everyone could turn off your videos and mute your audios if you're not speaking. So, thank you. Ms. McKenna, could you turn off your video, please? All right, I'll continue. Thank you. So we would vote to formally close the hearing and then we would deliberate and take a formal vote. What our vote would be is, do we recommend or not recommend? Or we could, you could abstain from voting. But that would be the vote that we would take to recommend or not to recommend uh this bylaw to town meeting. Um I'm going to ask the question that if we, what is the propriety of of pursuing this path, that if we continue this meeting and we do not close deliberations, I understand that if there's substantive changes made to a proposed bylaw amendment, that it actually needs to be presented as a new bylaw amendment, that we couldn't consider it as the same one with changes. Um Ally or Attorney Costello, could you clarify that? To what extent can we make substantive changes in this bylaw and still be considering it as part of this public hearing?
I'd be happy to address that, Madam Chair, if I may.
Thank you.
Ally could chime in as well. Um the I I think that a a Planning Board does have um some discretion in 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 revisiting and revising, suggesting revised terms to a bylaw. As I indicated, uh those those particular revisions, in my view, can be less restrictive or more restrictive than the the bylaw as submitted, provided that it comports with the the original intent and scope of the bylaw. Um here, we're dealing with, as noted, a petitioned article. It's it's an overlay article. Uh it's a novel um concept for this particular property in in the town of Chatham. I I believe that so long as the petitioner is is on board with the concepts that the Planning Board wishes to pursue, that should someone challenge the 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 nature or scope of the revisions, the Planning Board would be afforded substantial deference by a court and and um proposed modifications. The the underlying concept, whenever it comes to town meeting, uh warrants and bylaws is, would the citizens of the town be deemed to have had reasonable notice of what is presented to them at a town meeting, even as revised? And uh given the nature of the discussions tonight, I think the types of revisions that the board members uh seem to uh desire could be fashioned such that they would fall within the scope of the the original proposed bylaw and would not require a a new hearing uh for the Planning Board.
All right. Um, thank you, Attorney Costello. So that would mean, um and Ally, please, you know, comment on this, that we might want to consider continuing this public hearing, allowing Attorney Costello and Mr. Ford to get together and to recraft some of the language in the bylaw, and then look at it again, uh and see if it meets all of the requirements that the board feels would feel it needs to meet in order to give a positive recommendation. Again, I just reminding the public and reminding the board that the board simply recommends or does not recommend, this is a citizen's petition, uh where the board is not putting forth this proposed bylaw amendment. So Ally, do you want to comment on that procedure? And or could we work on that tonight, even without continuing? Go ahead, Ally.
Well, Catherine, I do believe that you should probably talk to the applicant to see if they would be willing um to do that, or at least consider some of its suggestions. I do believe that Greg Clark is uh raising his hand.
Oh, okay. Great.
I would also like to point out, too, that um our town moderator, William Litchfield, is also Attorney William Litchfield is also on the call right now. I believe he's here for another meeting, another application. But I just wanted to point out that he is here if he did want to make any comments. But um Mr. Clark is raising his hand currently.
Great. Yes, thank you. Um so, Mr. Clark, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um Attorney Costello, I was going to ask you, uh, the forty-five days, I believe we submitted the paperwork on the twenty-seventh of August, which would make the eleventh of October the forty-fifth day. When the date has been set for a town meeting already, can that date be pushed out to allow both parties to meet and craft the language that satisfies every everyone on what we're proposing?
Mr. Costello, would you like to reply?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um once the warrant is duly posted, as this warrant has been, um, the town meeting should generally proceed on the date on which uh the the meeting is scheduled and the warrant. Under these extraordinary times, there have been numerous town meetings postponed and pushed back um as a result of the the COVID nineteen pandemic. And there is a a mechanism to do so. Uh I think the Board of Selectmen can reschedule a town meeting, although the Board of Selectmen, I do not believe, has any meeting scheduled between now and and town meeting, although I may be wrong on that point. And the moderator has authority to uh reschedule town meetings under certain circumstances. Uh those circumstances that warrant the rescheduling of a town meeting typically relate to um physical or other causes whereby it would be imprudent or inappropriate to schedule a town meeting, whether it be weather, um pandemic, uh as we're we're currently experiencing. So I I think, and I and if Bill Litchfield would like to chime in on this, I would very much uh uh like to hear his opinion. But I I think it would be difficult at this late juncture to reschedule the town meeting to a later date, particularly one, you know, uh on such short notice. What we could always do is convene the town meeting with an understanding that there would be a motion made immediately to adjourn to a date certain down the road. That would save the article for consideration by town meeting for a later date. But I think it may be difficult to avoid having to uh convene and and appear and and vote next Saturday.
Thank you, Mr. Costello. Mr. Litchfield, would you like to comment?
I'll I'll answer that cautiously. No, I wouldn't, but I will. Thank you, um, Madam Chairman. Uh Bill Litchfield wearing uh another hat. Uh I agree with most everything Mr. Costello has said. Uh the normal or the extraordinary reasons for rescheduling a town meeting are exactly those which Pat has spoken to, and they they do not apply here. Um there's also a question as to whatever changes may be agreed upon would have to be within the scope of the article. And as Pat said, that is something that can be, I think, probably addressed. I I don't see, however, uh a way to alert the townspeople between now and one o'clock Saturday afternoon. Uh I mean, it may be possible if the Board of Selectmen, the Planning Board, the petitioner, and the media were all in agreement that no action is going to be taken. Uh as long as one hundred people don't show up, it would be possible to uh entertain a motion for the lack of a quorum to a date certain. Difficulty with that is the pandemic and weather. Uh we're not going to have an indoor town meeting, and the longer we go into October, the more problematic it is. So I will try to be cooperative in any way that I can, but it it's going to be difficult uh to accomplish a a consensus, I think, between now and Saturday, even if it is within the scope. And I'm not sure what will happen if uh if we have a meeting on Saturday. It's possible that the voters may be frustrated enough that if a hundred of them show up, they vote simply to adjourn the meeting rather than to address it to a date certain. So there's an awful lot of uncertainty, and I certainly don't envy the job that you have over the next four days.
Thank you, Mr. Litchfield. Um also, if I, again, this is Catherine Halpern. If I could just comment, it seems that we're at the point where there is a possibility uh of especially the attorneys working together to craft some language that will be uh more acceptable, that will address some of the issues that have come up from the board and will uh make it possible that the board would vote favorably to recommend this petition favorably. But there's only a couple of days. Uh we would probably have to continue the hearing. And of course, it's not guaranteed. Um we don't know how that'll be. So uh it's a little difficult for me to see how we should proceed. Um there is also the possibility of the applicant withdrawing this petition and reintroducing a a recrafted petition. Uh that does address some of the issues that have come up tonight. That's also a possibility. Uh Mr. Clark, uh do you have, I'm going to ask you if you have, I'm going to ask you your viewpoint on on the issues that have come up on and on how to proceed. Would you be in favor of, in a sense, taking the chance of reworking uh the bylaw to some degree uh before it goes to town meeting? Or would you, are you in favor of working in that direction?
Madam Chair, thank you. I we we would absolutely um believe that we should be able to work with Attorney Costello and the rest of the members of the Board of Town who would have a say in it on creating language that gives confidence and gives guarantees to all the things that we've said we want to do, that they will occur and they will occur timely. Um I think that your suggestion of continuing this hearing and us getting on the phone tomorrow immediately and starting that conversation, I believe we can get it done in the next two days. But other people may have conflicts with schedule and so on. I don't, I can't speak for them. But I I believe that we should be able to create a document that states and addresses the concerns that I've heard, that other people have been saying, so that is competent enough to go to a town vote on this weekend and people understand that there aren't what they perceive as loopholes in the language. That's what I would suggest.
Okay.
If we can't can't continue the um the date of the town meeting for a week.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clark. Uh I think at this point, I'm going to go back to the board.
It's Mike Ford. Could I just add one thing to what Mr. Clark had said?
Yes, please go ahead, Mr. Ford.
As as an option to continuing the town meeting, for all the reasons that Mr. Litchfield has indicated might be problematic, the Planning Board could continue this public hearing until Thursday night or Thursday afternoon to give us an opportunity to speak with Mr. Costello and see whether there is any um any way we can put together some language that the Planning Board could then review at a subsequent hearing before the town meeting.
Yes.
So I just ran an option out to you, Madam Chairman. I think that's also something that's on the table.
All right. And is it practi- can I just ask uh for Mr. Clark, Mr. Ford, and Mr. Costello, is it practical that you will actually have the time to meet over the next couple of days to do what needs to be done, if the board would consider continuing this public hearing?
This is Pat Costello, Madam Chair. Um I I was thinking exactly what Mike had just indicated in terms of a this board continuing its hearing till to later this week. And I would be available pretty much anytime tomorrow. Um and Wednesday Wednesday looks good as well to to convene or correspond with Mike and or uh Mr. Clark, just to try to hammer through this. So I I could do that for a a a a continued Planning Board hearing later this week, if the board is is desires of same.
Okay. And possibly, the board could do that on Thursday or Friday, which is the last minute.
Yeah.
But um it's a possibility. So I think what I'd like to-
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Bob Dibis, could 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 I make a motion to continue the uh the uh the meeting of the uh-
The public hearing?
Public hearing, thank you.
Yes.
For a later date.
A later date. Ally, do we need to have a specific date?
Yes, it has to be a a specific date and a specific time.
And what are the dates and times that are available at the moment?
Um, so I did check beforehand, just in case. Um it is, we are, we can um have a here, you know, continue this public hearing on Thursday, October first. Uh we could potentially do it at four P M. Um or in the alternative, we could also do it on Friday. Um, you know, at any time during the day or um, you know, in that in the evening.
All right. I need to say that October first is a problem for me. So I would ask that we continue to Friday. And I will have to rearrange my schedule to do that, but it's more possible.
Well, this is Bob Dibis. I'll make the motion to continue until Friday. Uh you you can pick the time for me. Thank you.
All right. So why don't there-
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, can the public speak before or after the motion?
Uh, not at this time. I'm sorry, Elaine.
I don't know how you can do this when the public has been here and you're going to change everything and on Friday, and we are going into Saturday meeting, and we don't even know what we're going to be looking at? Who are you working for? I I seriously, you know, this is outrageous. I'm sorry, but, you know, there's something wrong here when you can continue this after we are all on here, and then you they can make changes, and we're going to walk into a town meeting during a pandemic, and we don't even know what we're looking at, because a warrant article that's been published that we're going to get handed is going to be wrong. So uh, again, who are you working for? Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Chain.
Uh, this is Warren Chain. Um I guess I have to agree with the sentiments of um Mr. Gibbs on this particular point. Um it's impossible for me to feel that I personally can get my arms around the nuances of changes that have yet to be presented to us until Friday uh to vote on uh anything that would go forward to town meeting. I find it absolutely inconceivable that anyone at that town meeting, other than the possibly the Planning Board members, would be able to be in a position to have a considered opinion about whatever is available for them. How it would be distributed, I have no idea. The newspaper is already will have been delivered. Uh you can send emails to the town, I suppose. Many people may or may not even get them. You will not have had any chance to deliberate between uh individuals, uh voters, if you would. Uh it's just inconceivable that anyone could be prepared to vote in the middle of a pandemic out in the baseball field on something that has only been created the day before, literally the evening before. So I would not be in favor at all of continuing this meeting, because I just cannot believe it being productive and achieving the objective.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chain. So uh we have a motion on the floor. Mr. Dubus, I think I would like to withdraw your motion and instead uh get the board comments uh before we make a motion to continue or to close the hearing. Um so-
That would be fine. Thank you.
All right.
Catherine, I'm sorry. This is Ally. I just want to make one comment before you all go on. I do believe the Board of the Board of Selectmen is planning on reviewing this um- I do believe the Board of Selectmen is planning on reviewing this petition tomorrow and giving a recommendation at their meeting. And also, FinCom is on Wednesday reviewing this petition, so they wouldn't have time to make a recommendation and to meet. So I just wanted to put that out there as well as a consideration.
All right. So they would be reviewing the proposed bylaw amendment as it stands now, not with changes that would be put forth when Attorney Ford and Attorney Costello review things. Is that correct, Ally?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. So let's just get a sense of the Board before we have a formal vote, whether to continue the public hearing or close the hearing and deliberate. Art Spru, could I get a sense of your opinion on this?
I think that's not going to be, it's not going to happen this week. Our process, we've done zoning before. Our process is planning board flushes this out. They come up modifications. They air it plenty. And then they take the recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. Board of Selectmen then takes and considers what we've had to say. They vote on it, goes to the Finance Committee. They have information that we've provided. And we're going to circumvent that process here. I don't know how we can do that in the four days that we have ahead of us and have the public aware of what's going on. I don't think it's fair to the public. I don't think it's fair to our Board to be pinched like this. So I would say that I would not propose going ahead with the modifications and forcing them through without due consideration by the other boards.
All right. And Warren, I think we've heard from you. And so if that's all right, unless you have something to add, and I'll go on to-
For me, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Tom Gagin, just, we're not in a formal vote. I just want to get a sense of whether you're in favor of continuing or moving ahead and closing the hearing.
Tom Gagin, I'm not in favor of closing the hearing. I am in favor of continuing. And I'd like to echo what Art Spru said and Elaine, is that this is probably not a fair procedure. I think we're opening up our own little Pandora's box in terms of reasonable input and time for input from the town in general. I wish we could have some consideration because I don't want to vote negatively on this and throw the baby out with the bathwater. The theater is important to the town, but we need some further guarantees that we know where the heck all of this proposal is going. So my encouragement is to the applicant for some cooperation with a larger, longer period of time to accomplish a positive recommendation from the Board. But right now, I, my sense is that it would not be positive. So Art Spru, I agree with what he has said. And also Elaine, I think we're just rushing this beyond what I think is reasonable for this Board to act upon.
Okay, thank you, Tom. And Bob Dubus, would you like to comment? And again, this is not a formal vote.
Bob Dubus, I've already stuck my foot in it once or twice here already.
Okay.
Unfortunately, I agree with the time restraint. I'm not in favor of closing the hearing. I don't know if certain things could be brought up at the town meeting to tweak it a little bit. I know we've tweaked other proposals at town meeting. So if the two attorneys got together and had some minor language details and other things that were simple and could do what we're asking or what we want to happen about the theater part, maybe they could be brought up at the town meeting, explained, and that might help.
Okay, thank you, Bob. And Bob, Wirthschaft, again, this is not a formal vote.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is really a difficult, it's going to be difficult for me to say yes to this proposal. And yet I want, I want this to go forward. And my advice to the applicants is to withdraw it because even if we rush it through, given what is out there right now, I do not see the town voting this forward and in its present form. I do think it can be changed as we've talked about tonight, and you have a good chance of getting that approved in the spring. But it's your, it's your choice. I would say if I'm going to, if, given the procedures, that we should close the meeting, give it a vote. And unless the applicant wants to, they want us to postpone the decision because they're going to delay the meeting.
Okay, thank you, Bob. And Roger Griffin, again, this is not a formal vote, just a sense of whether you'd be in favor of continuing the meeting with the tight timetable or closing the hearing and taking a vote tonight.
I think we need more time to really, for the benefit of everybody. I just think, I don't see enough time to do it right.
All right.
I think we need, I think we need, even for the benefit of Great Clive, I think everyone needs more time.
Yes, okay, thank you, Roger. So Ally, I'm going to summarize what I think our choice is now is we can, the Board would vote whether to close the public hearing or to keep it or to continue it. And then once, if we do vote, to close the public hearing. And again, a reminder to the Board, it does not have to be a unanimous vote, that then we would deliberate and then we would need to vote on whether or not we recommend this petition in its current form. And again, you could vote yes or no, or you could abstain. And it does not need to be a unanimous vote. Ally, did you want to add any comments on what our procedure is right at this point?
No, those are your options, but you do also need to, and I might have missed this option that you put out there, you do need to close the public hearing if that's-
Yes, 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 thank you. So at this point, I am going to ask for a motion to close the public hearing. And again, you can vote yes or no. So do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Madam Chairman, this is Warren Chain. I so move that we close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Second.
Tom Gagin seconded the motion. So now we will do a formal vote. And I will just remind the public that there is no audience participation once the hearing is closed and the Board is in formal deliberation and formal vote.
Catherine.
Yes.
This is Ally. Before you go on, there was a comment in the chat that I just thought I should read.
Thank you.
So the question is all, if this is rejected at special town meeting, can they not come back for a certain period of time? That was, and he said that was a question for me, Ally. And Pat, if you want to jump in with more specifics, but it is in mass general law that if the planning board does issue a negative recommendation, so not a positive recommendation, and it is at town meeting, it does fail, the petition does fail, they have to wait two years to come back with this petition. And Pat, please, if it's-
That's good, but she shouldn't have said that.
Elaine, Elaine, I'm sorry, this is Catherine, the Chair, and we're not recognizing public comments at this point in the proceedings. We're still in the Board comments. So if you can let Ally finish, that would be fine. So Ally, please go ahead.
No, that was it. I just wanted to let the Board know.
So Ally, I'm actually going to ask you to repeat that. So just so that we're clear.
I just want to let the Board know that if it is a negative recommendation from the Board and it does go forward at town meeting and it is defeated, that the petitioner can't come back for two years with this petition. And Pat, I think maybe you should clarify for them if it's the specific petition or if they reworked it and made amendments to it if they could come back at that time.
No, Ally is absolutely correct. If town meeting takes negative action on the article as submitted, whether that's as amended or in its initial form, the negative action would preclude that article or that amendment to the zoning bylaw from coming back before town meeting for two years unless there's a two-thirds vote of the planning board waiving that requirement. So even if the article is amended but stays within the parameters or within the scope of the original article as presented, if it is defeated at town meeting and not passed, it would not be able to come back in a substantially similar form for a two-year period unless the planning board by a two-thirds vote authorizes it.
And this is Catherine, Attorney Costello, would the planning board need to take that vote at the public hearing tonight or subsequent to the town meeting action?
That would be subsequent, Madam Chair. It would be upon submission of a later article.
All right. All right. I do see that Mr. Clark has his hand raised. It is a bit out of order, but I will recognize you, Mr. Clark, if you'd like to speak before we go to our formal vote.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. If I hit that, I must have hit it by accident. No, I did that.
All right, that's fine. That's fine, all right. So we'll continue. And Attorney Costello, I just want a clarification. Is the recommendation, does the recommendation of the planning board, whether it's positive or negative, have any effect on that two-year delay that has to occur if town meeting takes a negative action on this proposed bylaw amendment?
No, it doesn't, Madam Chair. It's the vote of town meeting that triggers that two-year period.
All right, all right. So with that, what we need to do to proceed is, I'm, excuse me, I don't, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
Madam Chairman.
Motion ended.
Seconded.
Okay. So Warren made the motion and did Tom Gagin second it, is that correct?
Yes, Madam Chair, Tom Gagin, I did second it.
Okay, thank you, sorry. So let's go through and take a roll call vote. Again, you can vote yes or no, or you can abstain. So Art Spru, how do you vote?
Art Spru, yes to close the meeting.
Thank you. Warren Chain, how do you vote?
This is Warren Chain. I vote to close the meeting.
Thank you. Tom Gagin.
Tom Gagin votes to close the meeting.
Thank you. Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus votes to close the meeting.
Thank you. Bob Wirthschaft?
Bob Wirthschaft votes to close the meeting.
And Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin vote to close the meeting.
And this is Catherine Halpern. I also vote to close the public hearing. So now we're in formal deliberations. I'll go through the Board just to see if you have any additional comments before we go to formal vote on recommending this citizen's petition. Art Spru?
No, I don't think I have any other comments at this point.
Thank you. Warren Chain?
This is Warren Chain. I don't think there's anyone that's more in favor of most of the zoning change like this one, but I just see absolutely no way that this can go forward without significant rework, and there's just no time to do it. So I cannot vote in favor of recommending this to the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chain. I'll just remind everyone, we're not in formal vote yet, but I do appreciate your comments. Tom Gagin, any additional comments in formal deliberation before we go to vote?
Madam Chair, no additional comments.
Thank you. Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, no additional comments.
Bob Wirthschaft?
Bob Wirthschaft, no additional comments.
And Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, no additional comments.
All right. So we will go to a formal vote. I would just like to, before we vote as Chair, I would like to, to some degree, echo what Mr. Chain has said. I believe I, that everyone is in support generally of the intent of this proposed bylaw amendment, which is to allow the theater to be revived. But it's obvious that there is some reworking that needs to be done and time is short. And the public also needs to be well informed of the revised bylaw. If the reworking is to be done, that will satisfy both the applicant and the Board and the public. So with that comment, we will-
Madam Chair, Tom Gagin?
Yes, please go ahead, Mr. Gagin.
Madam Chair, I'm not sure that the Chair has voted on our last vote.
Vote to close, I did. I voted to close the public hearing, yes. I did. But thank you for bringing it up. So I think now what I need is a motion either to recommend or not to recommend this proposed zoning bylaw amendment to town meeting. And again, you can vote either yes or no or abstain. So do I have a motion?
Madam Chairman, before you make that motion, can, could, could we have a motion to not have a result? In other words, not a yes and not a no and abstain, abstention from the comment.
You can, you can individually abstain from voting, but we do have to take a vote tonight.
I know, that's not what I'm asking you. I'm asking you, can we have a non-vote? In other words, not, not a disagreeing one and not a positive one, just no vote. I mean, vote to not have a comment.
Now, Ally and I discussed this earlier today, but Ally, can you reply to Bob's question?
I think that Attorney Costello might be the best person to address this, too.
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. What Chapter 48, Section 5 provides is that no vote by town meeting to adopt a proposed bylaw or amendment thereto shall be taken unless or until the planning board submits a recommendation on the article and/or 21 days from the planning board hearing passes. Now, in this, again, unique situation, should the planning board not vote one way or the other to recommend or not recommend this article, there would be no, there would be no recommendation submitted to town meeting by the planning board. And in my opinion, legally, the town meeting would not be able to act upon the article.
Thank you, Attorney Costello. So Bob, is that clear? Again, you can, you can individually choose to abstain.
Bob Dubus, yes, it is very clear.
All right, but we do have to vote. And the motion could be to recommend or to not recommend, and you can, each individual Board member can vote yes or no to that motion or abstain. So may I have a motion to not recommend this petition to town meeting?
This is Warren Chain, Madam Chairman. I so move to not recommend this petition to town meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chain. May I have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
All right. So let's do a formal vote. The motion is to not recommend this citizen's petition to town meeting. Art Spru?
Art Spru, I approve to not recommend.
Thank you. Yes, you are. Warren Chain?
This is Warren Chain. I also approve to not recommend.
Thank you. Tom Gagin?
You know.
Mr. Gagin, it might help to just say that more clearly.
Tom Gagin, I vote to not approve.
Right, to not recommend, thank you. Is that correct?
That is correct, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus abstains.
Thank you, Bob. Bob Wirthschaft?
Bob Wirthschaft votes to not recommend.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin vote to not recommend.
And this is Catherine Halpern. I also vote to not recommend. So I think we are finished with this matter. The public hearing is closed. That being said, I think you've heard that with some revisions, we can reconsider this proposed bylaw amendment.
Catherine, I believe that Attorney Costello was raising his hand.
Yes, please go ahead, Mr. Costello.
Madam Chair, I just want to avoid any confusion, as we all do in this matter. My understanding of the vote that the Board just took was that the Board by unanimous vote voted not to recommend this article for approval by town meeting and will so report to town meeting.
Yes. But it was unanimous. It, there was one abstention.
One abstention, okay.
One abstention, and that is our vote.
Okay.
And what was unclear about it?
The, I believe one of the prior questions was whether or not the board had to take any action at all, and my answer was no, it doesn't. And if it doesn't, then town meeting legally can't even vote on the article. But what the, the, the sense of the conversation as it just unfolded, in my opinion, was that the board voted to report to town meeting that it is not recommending this article for approval.
Yes, that's what the board voted, yes.
Very good.
If there's anyone, good, all right. If there's anyone on the board who disagrees with that, now is the time to speak. All right, is that, you're, you're all set, Attorney Costello?
Thank you very much for the clarification.
All right, great. So I think the public hearing is closed, and I think we need to move on to our next agenda item. All right, and the next item on the agenda is release of covenant bond and statement of conditions regarding 20 Chatham Bars Avenue and 45 Chatham Bars Avenue. I do need to recuse myself from these two matters, and so our vice chair, Arthur Spru, will be conducting these proceedings, and I will rejoin you for the definitive subdivision plan review. So I will be muting and-
Thank you, Catherine. Okay, so the first one is the 20 Chatham Bars Avenue, CBI 2045 Chatham Bars Avenue, request for partial bond release. I'd like to allow the Eppken to give a summary of what they're requesting with this, with this bond release.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can everybody hear me? This is Thomas Taylor, Director of Operations for Chatham Bars, and last four digits of my phone number, 0582, on this call. And I just want to, you know, thank the board members for letting me be part of this tonight. And if you look at 20 Chatham Bars Ave, I'm looking to release about 65% of the bond request. And based on the completion of, all of the drainage is completed, all of the paving is completed, the striping of the parking lot, we had a little bit of a challenge with one of the drawings originally, so I have to go back and stripe the ADA spot in the back corner of 20 to complete the striping of that. And the planting and the irrigation of 20 CBI along the edge and the pruning is completed as well.
I'd like, Ally, you wrote a report up in here, and since you went out there to visit the site, I would thought that it'd be best if you could just share what you have uncovered and, and just before we go to the board for their input.
Of course, thank you. So this is Ally. I did take a visit to the site. I did go out with Mr. Taylor, and we did walk the site in its entirety and go through the plan with very much very detail and trying to figure out what was accomplished and what wasn't. So in my staff report, I do have a list of items that I believe have not been accomplished. So construction of two catch basins for eight-inch diameter leaching pits. These, it does look like there is drainage that was installed onsite, but we were not, staff did not go out when the drainage was installed. So it's just our common recommendation that we have an engineer certification provided confirming that the drainage was installed in accordance with the approved specifications and be provided with the planning board, to the planning board for review. And we had, to date, we have not received that yet. Installation of six bollards on the southern gravel parking lot, those were not installed when I did go out there. A dumpster enclosure and a pad fence, those were required with the original approval, and to date, they had not, or to date of the site visit, they had not been constructed or placed onsite. As Mr. Taylor indicated, striping of the northern property lot, parking lot has been completed with the exception of the handicap parking space. The handicap wrap has not been installed. And also the private right-of-way that I know that the planning board did have some interest in when we first reviewed this, although it is paved in some locations, it's not paved to the exact specifications of the approved plan. It does, it does appear that some of it has gravel on it. I do think that, you know, just from the site, it, it looks like it did meet the board's requirements or hopes when you did approve the plan. It's just not exactly as to what was approved. So I just wanted to point that out. So it's my recommendation, and you can see in your staff report, that the grant, that the planning board grant a partial release. The bond is in the amount of nine, currently, we have a bond in the amount of $92,700. So I'm recommending a $50,000 release on this application.
Let's go through the board comments or questions on this. We'll start with Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus here. I, I went down there and overlooked everything on that site, and I think that Ally's, Ally's number is a good number to release. A lot of the work hasn't been done, even though a lot hasn't been done, but, but I believe that they should be entitled to a $50,000 release.
Thanks, Bob Worchaster.
No, no comments from me.
Next, Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin, I would vote to release as so stated. They've done quite a bit of work, and as Bob has stated and Ally, that there's still some additional work, but their, their efforts seem to be on, on target. Thank you.
Next, Warren Chain, any comments, questions?
Warren Chain, I concur that Ally's recommendation is fine with me. I would only ask whether the amount of work that still remains could be done quickly, and if so, is it possible that we would just vote to approve a release of the entire bond subject to staff review and confirmation that the final undone pieces are finished? It seems a shame to go through all of this twice. We've got enough things to do on our agendas. I don't know the answer as to whether that can be done or not, so that's a question.
This is Bob Dubus. They've had quite a substantial length of time to finish everything, and they haven't finished it. So on that, I would not recommend that.
Okay.
Your counsel, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Next, last is Roger, Roger Griffin, you have any comments or questions?
No, no comments, no questions.
Okay. And my, my comments are consistent with what you've heard here. There's been a substantial amount of work that still is not done. I, I did go out and look at it. I think the, the recommendation to reduce it by 50,000 does make sense. So without any further comments, what I'll do is like to hear a motion to grant a partial release of the performance bond from its current amount of $92,700 to $42,700, a total release of $50,000. Do I have a motion on that?
Bob Worchafter moves.
And do I hear a second?
Roger Griffin, I'll second it.
Okay, so I'll take a roll call vote on this. Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus says yes.
Yes. Bob Worchaster?
Bob Worchaster says yes.
Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin says yes.
Warren Crane?
Warren Chain says yes.
And Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin says yes.
And Art Spru, I say yes. All right, with that, we've finished with this first release. The next one is 45 Chatham Bars Avenue, again, CBI 2045 Chatham Bars Avenue, request for partial bond release. Again, Mr. Taylor, would you like to give us a rundown on this one?
Yeah, so it's similar to the, it's similar, first of all, I want to say thank you for the first release. The second one, it's similar. When Ally and I walked a week or so ago, and she's right, I apologize, I was supposed to get a letter from Sean Riley stating that the drainage was properly installed and all the catch basins, and I kind of got, lost that. So I will get that letter out to Ally as soon as I can. But same thing, the drainage was completed at 45. We painted the entire building of 45. We did the paving and the striping on 45. And again, on the striping on 45, we were going off, we were going off a different drawing, so we shot a couple stripes for 10 spots, so I got to add that in the next week or two to finish up the, the striping. All the planting and all of the hedges and all the irrigation on 45 was completed as well. And what's left there that I think, well, Ally can comment on that if you want, she's probably got the written notes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Taylor. Ally, can you do the same thing? Can you run down your visit that you had there and what you observed?
Of course. So just like the other one, I did go out onsite with Mr. Taylor. We met onsite, and we went through the entire site plan and walked the entire site just so we could get on the same page. So after that review, I'll just, this is a list in your staff report on page two of what I believe was not completed to date of the site visit, which was on September 15. So first, staff was not consulted when the drainage was installed, and as such, it's recommended that an engineer certification be provided, that the drainage was installed in accordance with the approved specifications. So we did go outside, it did, it looked to me that, you know, the drainage had been installed, but again, we weren't onsite, staff wasn't onsite when it was done, so as our normal process, I am recommending that we get an engineer certification that it was done, as the plans indicated. The next is six bollard, the required six bollard lights have not been installed. The 12-foot-wide emergency access rolling gate has also not been installed. As Mr. Taylor indicated, the location and number of requiring parking spaces on the west side of the property, including with the handicapped, are incorrectly striped. The handicap parking spaces are in the incorrect location. Oh, I'm sorry, the parking spaces on the west side of the property, those were done, but the handicap was incorrectly striped with addition to a few additional parking spaces. And if you can see on the plan, let me get it larger here. So if you can see my arrow, these were done correctly over here, but it's hard to see there are a few parking spaces required on this side, as well as a handicap parking space, and this was done incorrectly. The striping there was done incorrectly. And then the next one, a proposed post lamp on the northeast side of the property has not been installed, and also the rain garden has not been constructed either. So the rain garden is located on this side of the property over here. So again, my recommendation, we do have a current $40,000 bond on this property. I am recommending a total release of $10,000, so it would be a remaining $30,000 bond that we have.
Okay, thank you. So we'll go for the board comments now. Let's start with Bob Dubus. Any comments or questions?
Yeah, I think Ally's proposal is a fair one, because you want to leave enough money in the kitty in case they don't finish it to be able to finish it. The rain garden's going to be some money, the, the striping's some money, the bollard, the electrical part is going to be, it's going to eat up part of what's left over. I'm just wondering if, if the, if anyone has certified the handicap spots as, spots as being actually handicap spots. The law has changed so fast, so I believe that a $10,000 release is fair.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Bob Worchaster?
Yeah, I'm going to go with Bob Dubus. He's the, he's the pro here.
Okay, thank you. Tom Gagin?
Bob Dubus is the man.
Okay, Warren Chain?
This is Warren Chain. I go with Bob as well.
Roger Griffin?
I go with Bob as well.
Okay, and this is Art Spru. I had the same, same thoughts that Bob did, so Bob's our man today. All right, with that, we'll go to a vote.
You have to have a motion first. This is Warren Chain. I move that we reduce the bond by 10,000 to 30,000.
Bob Dubus second.
All right, so I'll go down for a roll call. Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus approves.
Okay. Bob Worchafter?
Bob Worchafter approves.
Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin approve.
All right, Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
Okay, Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin approve.
And Art Spru, I approve too. So with that, we got releases for both of these in the amounts. And that closes out the release of covenants. We can go back to the next agenda item and, and welcome Catherine back.
Thank you.
Thank you, Arthur. This is Catherine. So the next item on our agenda is the definitive subdivision plan review for 119 Scattery Road. And again, this is a public hearing. I won't, I won't review the public hearing procedures since we've just completed a public hearing, so I think everyone is familiar with the public hearing procedures. But the first step is to have the public hearing notice read by our clerk, Roger Griffin. So Roger, would you please go ahead?
Sure. Public hearing notice for consideration of a definitive subdivision plan. As required by the MGL 41, Sections 81L and 810, 81O, the planning board of the Town of Chatham will hold a remote public hearing on Monday, September 28, 2020, at 5:00 p.m. to take public comments on the application of Catherine M. Ryan for approval of a definitive subdivision plan entitled, subdivision plan 119 Scattery, Chatham, Massachusetts, prepared for Catherine M. Ryan, located at 119 Scattery Road, showing the subdivision of land owned by Catherine M. Ryan, 5708 Line Haven Road, Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, 521, 515217. Plan prepared by East Southeast LLC dated August 13, 2020, and showing one proposed lot and two proposed parcels pursuant to the Governor, Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 orders pending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law 30A, Sections 20, and the Governors' March 23, 2020, order imposing limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This hearing of the Chatham Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation. The hearing will be accessible by interested bodies and the general public through the following link. Any, any person interested and wishing to be heard of this application should call the following teleconference number to join the hearing. Telephone number is 508-945-4410, conference ID number 225-322-986. A copy of the plan and application may be reviewed or requested at the Community Development Department located at 261 George Rider Road on weekdays between 7:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. Monday through Thursday, and 7:00 a.m. and 12:30 p.m. on Friday. Please, please email to receive the plan and application. Any person who is interested or wishing to be heard of the definitive plan should appear at these date, time, and place designated for the hearing. Roger Griffin, clerk, Chatham Planning Board.
Thank you, Roger. And do I have a presenter for this matter? The next step in our public hearing is a presentation by the applicant.
Good evening. For the record, Dan Eldridge?
Thank you, Seth.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you? Please go ahead.
Mike Ford is here as well, and he can answer technical questions should they arise. As stated, the proposal is to create one lot and two parcels. The intention is for parcel B to be conveyed to the Chatham Conservation Foundation. Parcel C is to be merged with 33 Whistler to bring it more into conformity. And- And Lot 1 is a conforming lot that is a panhandle. If it were not a panhandle, we'd be here under an approval not required plan. That panhandle is, is in excess of the minimum width and otherwise meets all the requirements. Because we're here under a subdivision, typically there are a number of items that are required. We've requested waivers for most of those. As this is an existing driveway, we didn't feel the need for storm drainage or the topography, the, the additional storm drainage, the subsurface conditions on the tract, significant natural features including trees, all the utilities, the profiles and cross-sections, and the planted profile of the driveway. As stated, this is an existing home and we're just taking out some of the land to, to give to the Conservation Foundation. If there are questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Thad. Mr. Ford, did you want to present before I go to board questions and comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mike Ford, also representing Catherine Ryan. No, I, I think Thad has told you everything you need to know in terms of lot, but I'm happy to answer any question board members may have.
Thank you. So let's just go through the board for questions or comments for Thad or Mike. So let's start with Art Spru, any questions or comments?
Just clarification, Catherine. You said there were existing driveways. It looks like there's two driveways that are actually servicing the lot. I mean, which, which driveway is the main driveway? Where is the address from?
The address is from the south, along the westerly boundary or the west side of parcel B is the legitimate frontage. So that gives us the 119 Scattery Road address. This property has been in common ownership for quite some time. So the easement from Whistler's Lane over has also been used. And that easement is also for the property to the north.
Okay, I missed that, Thad, thanks. I'm okay with everything else. You, you know my usual concerns, I like to see utilities and stuff like that. But you said this is existing, so I can understand the reason we're requesting a waiver. That's all I have, Catherine.
All right, thank you, Arthur. And Warren Chain, any comments or questions for Thad or Mr. Ford?
Warren Chain, just one quick question, are the view easements, both A and B, are those new view easements or are those existing?
Those are new view easements.
Thank you, no other questions?
No other, thank you. And Tom Gegen, questions or comments?
Tom Gegen, no questions or comments, thank you.
Thank you. And Bob Dubus, questions or comments for Thad or Mike Ford?
Bob Dubus does have some comments.
Okay, please go ahead.
I'm finally agreeing with Thad 100% on this deal. I know the property well, and there's no reason to ask for any, anything other than an okay on this property. This property's been here a long, long time, a lot of people have enjoyed the property. The family is well-known, and I, I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. And I'm just gonna ask you, you've looked at all the waivers that are requested and you're okay with all of those?
I, I am okay with it on this particular property.
Yes, okay, great, thank you. And Bob Werschafter, questions or comments for Thad or Mike Ford?
No, Bob Werschafter has no comments.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, I have no concerns or comments.
Thank you. And this is Catherine Halpern, I also have no concerns or comments. So what our vote, well, we are in public hearing, so excuse me, let me get back to where we were. So then we can move on to public statements in favor of the application. So do I have anyone connected from the public who would like to make, make a statement in favor of this application?
Well, Madam, Madam Chair, this is Nick Calucci. I'm representing also my wife, Eleanor Ellie. And we live at the adjoining property at 111 Scattery. And I, I don't know if it's correct for me to, to speak now for or against. I have some questions that I have that, that can, I would hope can be cleared up by, by the board. So I don't know whether it's right for me to speak now for, for or against. I don't, it's, it's up to you, but I'm, I'm willing to speak now if you'd like.
All right, well, we arrange our public hearing in such a way that we first ask for public statements in favor of the application, then later, public statements opposing. And you're saying you're neither favoring or opposing, you just have questions?
Yes.
Yeah, in that case, why don't you go ahead and state your questions? We'll do them now.
Okay. My first question is that I see that there's a view easement for A and B. How far does B extend into parcel C? My property adjoins and looks straight across the property that's being donated to the, the Chatham Conservation Foundation. And let me say that, for the most part, I'm very happy about that. Although, although there is wetlands there and we weren't really concerned a lot of people, anyone was gonna build there. In, in general, we're happy, and the way that it's been maintained is wonderful. But is there a view easement that we have also? In case, you know, some kind of invasive plant grows in there? Which also gets to another question about what's the obligation of the foundation to maintain that property in case something goes in there that's, you know, somebody throws an old tire in there? Or there's an invasive vegetation that grows or something like that? I, I'm curious about those two questions first, and then I have one other.
All right. Mr. Ford or Thad, would you like to address those questions?
Sure, this is Mike Ford. So these view easements are new easements. My client Catherine Ryan, who owns the property and is gifting parcel B to the Conservation Foundation. Parcel B used to be a tennis court.
Right.
A very large tennis court, and she removed it, undeveloped that piece with an eye towards, frankly, undeveloping it, that was her goal. And she now wants to give it to the Chatham Conservation Foundation. I think you'll find that they are good stewards of their property. The view easements will be for the benefit of 33 Whistler and Lot 1 over those particular areas. And it was Catherine's wish that new houses not be built in those areas or other structures that created a, a different landscape than what exists now. She's very much trying to keep the property the way it is even with new owners involved. You will not have the benefit of any view easement, those are private agreements that are being made by and among the owners of the property there and subsequent owners of the property.
So, yeah, I'm not, Mr. Ford, first of all, once again, I'm, I'm, that's why I didn't want to say I'm against this. For the most part, I think it's wonderful what she's done and what's, what, what Ms. Ryan has done in that beautiful meadow and field to bring the wild flowers back into there is just terrific. I'm just making sure I understand how far that view easement extends because there's a grove of trees to the side there that are fine. It's just, you know, I want to know what, you know, I look straight over that, that field to the salt pond and the ocean beyond. And I just want to make sure, you know, it stays the way that it is. And if that's what she wants, and that's what's stipulated by the foundation, and they're going to, to ensure that's the case, then that's wonderful.
All right, and then your second question was about the obligation to maintain the parcel B. Mr. Ford, did you want to address that question?
Yeah, to the extent it has some relevance to this hearing, when she conveys Lot B to the foundation, it will be subject to the view easement. And the owners of Lot 1 and Lot C, which would be part of 33 Whistler, will have a right to enforce that view easement over foundation property.
Okay.
All right.
Fine, thank you. Then my, my last question has to do with the panhandle in the driveway. And just understanding, once again, I'm just trying to, I don't do this for a living. I just want to understand what that really means and why the driveway on Whistler can't be the, used to the point that one of the other board members, maybe the very first one, brought up. Why, why are they keeping that driveway?
That's, that's the existing driveway.
Mm-hmm.
That's how the house is accessed now, and it's the intention to keep that driveway as the access and that, that address of Scattery Road as the access.
But there's also access on Whistler, correct?
There is not access on Whistler.
Off of Whistler, there's an easement from off of Whistler, no?
There is, and whether that will continue, I'm not sure in the future, that's up to my client at some point. But the access off of Scattery is important because that is frontage. And you need frontage to have a legal lot, and therefore the driveway has to remain there.
Is there any stipulation about whether that can be paved or widened or anything? Or there's no stipula, it's a, it's a fine, it's fine now and it doesn't interfere. I'm just now just trying to understand, will it stay exactly the same as that's the intention?
There are no present plans to change the driveway.
Okay.
If I may, Dan Eldridge, any of these, any work done within these areas, the driveway, if that were to change substantially, that would require zoning board of appeals, planning board, and conservation commission approval before moving forward.
Okay. That, that's very good, thank you so much. That's, outside of that, I, I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Calucci. So I'll ask if there's any other members of the public connected to the call who would like to make a statement in favor of this application. Hearing none, the next step is to read correspondence. I think we have no correspondence regarding this, unless Ally, we've received something in the last couple of hours?
Yep, Catherine, we have not received any correspondence.
So there's no correspondence, so now I'll ask for any public statements opposing this application. Is there anyone connected to the call who would want to make a statement in opposition to this application?
This is Susan Castle, I'm an abutting neighbor to Catherine Ryan.
All right, please go ahead, Ms. Castle.
Yeah, I'm not commenting to oppose her proposal, but similar to the man who spoke previously, I had a question about.
All right. I'll ask, I'll ask you to be brief, but please go ahead with your question.
Yeah, the attorney, I think, was just alluding to the fact that the easement at the north end of the property does not provide access to Lot Number 1, which is, used to not be true, but they just put some plantings in, I believe, in the last month or so, so that it is currently blocked off. But I'm the owner of the property that the easement drives into. I'm at 35 Whistler, which is the property north of Catherine Ryan's barn in that northwestern corner, correct? So somebody made a comment, will the easement continue? So was that a question asking if it would continue for the sake of the Ryan property? Because obviously the easement has to continue for me to access my property. So maybe somebody could clarify that?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'll try, it's Mike Ford.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Ford.
As I understand the title in there, you have an independent easement, separate and apart from whatever rights may benefit the Ryan property, and no one can take your easement away, so.
Okay, that's what I assumed.
Yeah, you have an independent right.
But it sounds like with the change in their property, they will no longer use the easement? Or do they still have a legal right to use that easement in some form?
They may have a legal right, I'm not sure whether they're going to decide, she's going to decide to abandon that.
And what would be the ramifications of her abandoning that?
None from a zoning or subdivision standpoint, the legal access is Scattery, and that's the driveway.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Ms. Castle.
All right, I guess that answers my question. One more quick one, though, if the, the lines that are being redrawn at the north end of the property, those are being added to 33 Whistler, correct?
Just parcel C is being added to 33 Whistler.
Oh, just parcel C, okay.
Down there.
Understood, okay, so not that, not that piece east of the barn?
That's correct.
Okay, so those lines that are drawn were already in existence?
Those lines drawn are your easement.
Okay, and what about that V shape that dips down below the easement? Is that part of 33 Whistler or is that part of Ryan's on Scattery? That's second.
That's part of lot.
That's part of the septic system.
Okay, all right. Thank you for the clarification.
We show the septic system because parcel C is located 10 feet from that septic where 10 feet is required.
Understood, okay, thanks for clarifying.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Castle. And I'll just ask again, any other members of the public connected who wish to make a statement in opposition of this application? All right, there being none, Mr. Ford, I don't think you really need any rebuttal, but would you like to make any additional comments?
No, no, thank you for the opportunity, though.
All right, and now we go to board comments. I'll just go through the board, see if there's any additional questions or comments before we vote to close the public hearing and go to formal vote. So any additional comments or questions, Art Spru?
Art Spru, no more comments or questions for me.
Warren Chain?
This is Warren Chain, no comments or questions.
Tom Gegen?
Tom Gegen, no comments or questions.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, no comments.
Bob Werschafter?
Bob Werschafter, no comments.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, no comments.
Great, and this is Catherine, I have no further comments or questions. So at this point, I would ask for a vote to close the public hearing, and then the board will formally deliberate and vote on this matter. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the hearing.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I'll second that, Roger Griffin.
Thank you, so, and now we'll vote, Art Spru?
Art Spru, approve to close.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve to close.
Tom Gegen?
Tom Gegen, approve to close.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, approve to close.
Bob Werschafter?
Bob Werschafter, approve to close.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, approve to close.
And this is Catherine Halpern, I approve to close the hearing. So now may I have a motion to endorse, to approve this subdivision plan with conditions? No, we don't have any conditions as stated, so that would be our vote. Would be to approve this subdivision plan.
This is Bob Wersch after, I move to approve the plan.
Do I have a second?
Warren Chain, I'm second.
Thank you, so let's do this.
Catherine, this is Art Spru, just asked for one clarification on this motion.
Certainly, please go ahead.
So with this motion, we're going along with the staff's suggestion that neither a statement of conditions nor a performance guarantee is necessary, correct?
That is what we're doing.
Okay.
Yes, is that all right?
I just wanted to confirm that.
Yes, that's, that is how we're voting. So Art Spru, how do you vote?
Art Spru, I approve.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
Tom Gegen?
Tom Gegen votes in favor.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus approves.
Bob Wersch after?
Bob Wersch after approves.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin approve.
And this is Catherine Halpern, I also approve. And this is Catherine Halpern, I also approve. So this matter is concluded, the public hearing is closed, the board has voted. We'll go on to our next agenda item. Thank you, Mr. Ford, and thank you, Thad.
Thank you.
So then, you're welcome. The next item on the agenda is a recommendation to the zoning board of appeals, actually a couple of them. And the first one is regarding 144 Chat Harbor Lane. And do I have a presenter, is this Mr. Litchfield?
And Thad Aldridge.
Thad, okay, please go ahead.
All right, Thad Aldridge, Southeast. The McKenna's were on earlier, I believe, I'm not sure if they're still on. It has been a long meeting, I see Mike McKenna listed. Mr. Litchfield was on earlier, I'd assume he's still on.
I am.
So, very good. As you're somewhat familiar with, anytime we have a driveway that is within a floodplain, it requires conservation, zoning board of appeals, and a recommendation or review by the planning board to make sure that that driveway is not going to inhibit the passage of water during a flood. And so we have the end of Chat Harbor Road, 144 and 130, Chat, I'm sorry, Chat Harbor Lane. Chat Harbor Lane goes through the floodplain, over the marsh, and into the subject property. We're proposing to maintain the existing driveway. It's Sheet 3, Ellie, is. It's a good one. So the proposal is to maintain the existing driveway and extend it out to the top of the revetment. And this is primarily for sand nourishment, so that so that sand can be delivered all the way out to the beach that needs it. The proposed, the proposal in general is to take the house off the coastal bank and build a house further inland. And a driveway will have to go through that, and that will cross the floodplain in order to get there. The driveways will be permeable. The driveway going to the house does have to cut into the ground a little bit, but that's not going to change the flow of water. If anything, it will increase the ability for the land to have floodwaters over it. The driveway going out to the beach is going to be pretty minimal, and that is primarily for access seasonal nourishment. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right, let's go through the board and just see if there are any questions for Thad. Art Spru.
Art Spru, I took a look at the contours on the drive there, and they, they're do as Thad has stated. And it's, it's a good approach, the way he's done that, he's not impeding any of the flow. So this, this looks like a good approach, nothing else.
Great, thank you, Art. Warren Chain, questions or comments?
Thad, just one question, is, is the nourishment that is envisioned here a recurring nourishment or a one-time nourishment? And, and does it actually require its own driveway to facilitate it? Or could it be eliminated completely and just requested for access over, over the ground when needed?
So this area has been eroding for quite some time, and nourishment has been added here from dredges. We're looking at a seasonal nourishment plan, so we wouldn't want to keep a roadway open to get out there. And unfortunately, there's no real viable access from any other direction.
So I assume that this driveway access for nourishment is part of the conservation commission review, right?
It is.
That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Juan. Tom Gagin, any questions or comments?
None, Tom Gagin, none.
Thank you. Bob Dubus.
Yeah, Bob Dubus, Thad, I think that's probably a pretty good idea to keep the road for nourishment because like, that has been one of the worst areas in Chatham, other than Scattery to be, can hit. I'm glad to see you moving the house off the, off the, off the bank and touch and go there every once in a while. Thad, is that, I was looking at the new septic system, is that a, is that in a containment wall? Or is there enough land there to hold, hold a septic? And the other question is, is the house got a foundation or is it on stilts?
No, this is actually, the proposed building is outside the floodplain. There's enough elevation there, so we get the five-foot separation to groundwater with having a conventional lackade septic system.
That's good, I'm glad to see it moved up there and protect the house and get it off the wall. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Bob Wurchafter, any questions or comments?
Yeah, I do because I have, and it's been a lot of time trying to figure it out, but I have five maps that are exactly the same.
I think, I think that was a printer error. So if you can look at the screen, there's.
Going to just ask if you could quickly flash through all the maps and show us what is on each map? Because I was unable to look at it.
Yeah, that's great. So Thad could, and Ellie, could you do that? Could you just go through the, the different maps? And Thad, if you could just summarize what is shown for Bob.
The first map would be the existing conditions.
Definitely got five of those.
Okay. You looked out with everything existing, so.
Sorry, Bob, that was my fault, I couldn't print it out.
It was a printer error.
Okay.
So looking at this, you can see a red line and an orange line that, actually, if you go to Sheet 2, Ellie, thank you. So these are the floodplains that are around the property. You can see that we have two lobes of upland. The existing house is just into the velocity zone in red, down to the south. And then the proposed house site is to the north, where we're outside of A-zone. Great. So Sheet 3 is the post-conditions plan after they're said and done. And again, the proposal is to take out the house that's on the, on the bank, restore that area, put a new house in the back of the property, outside of the floodplain. But in order to get to that house, we have to go through the floodplain. These are a couple of blowups of the different areas. You know, it was more of a vegetation plan for conservation. This has changed through the process, and so that's, that's all before the conservation commission. And then we have a blowup of the post-conditions of the house itself. It's a large site, we're looking at about five acres here, but most of it is wet. As you can see here, the main driveway is coming up, and it's, it's cutting right through the floodplain. But we're getting out of it for the, for the project itself.
Thank you, that's very helpful, I have no other comments.
Thank you, Bob. And Roger Griffin, any questions or comments?
No, I have no questions or comments, I found, I'm very new to this, I found that fascinating, that was great, no, I have no comments.
Okay, thank you, Roger, this is Catherine. I really don't have any questions or comments, I think you've, we did not, there was a printer problem, and we did not see your full set of plans in our packet, but I think they're very clear. So I think with that being said, what is before the board is we need to make a recommendation to the zoning board of appeals. And I would propose that I would ask for a vote to make a positive recommendation to the zoning board of appeals, but that we include the language, that we always include that the driveway shall be constructed of a permeable material and shall be constructed in a manner which permits the unobstructed flow of water. Do I have a motion?
This is Bob Dubus, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Art Spru, second.
All right, I have two seconds, let's.
I'll give it to Warren.
Okay.
All right, great, so Warren Chain seconded, so let's go through our vote. Art Spru.
Art Spru, approve.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, approve.
Tom Gagin.
Approve, Tom Gagin.
Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus, approve.
Bob Wurchafter.
Bob Wurchafter, approve.
Roger Griffin.
Roger Griffin, approve.
And this is Catherine Halpern, I also approve. Thank you, Thad.
Thank you.
And now we have, I believe, one more item on our agenda, which is also a recommendation to the zoning board of appeals. And this is, they have now requested our recommendation for 512 Main Street, which was the proposed construction of the facility management building. And we did hear that presentation, I think, a couple of weeks ago. And I understand we don't have a presenter, we've heard the presentation, is that correct, Ellie?
Yeah, sorry, I was just trying to bring the plan up. We did hear this presentation, I want to say it was a few weeks ago, but this is for 512 Main Street, it's the Wayside Inn. The planning board did approve it, and I do believe that there was a question about sending a positive recommendation to the zoning board of appeals at the time. And I said that we should wait until they formally requested of us, as the application hadn't been submitted yet to the zoning board of appeals. So this is really just coming back and asking you, as the planning board, to make a recommendation to the zoning board of appeals.
So I'm going to ask if someone would like to offer a motion that we give a positive recommendation on this matter to the zoning board of appeals.
I'll do that, I think you have a positive recommendation, Roger Griffin.
Thank you, do I have a second to that motion?
Second, Bob Dubus.
Thank you, so let's do our vote, Art Spru.
Art Spru, approve.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, approve.
Tom Gagin.
Tom Gagin, approve.
Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus, approve.
Bob Wurchafter.
Bob Wurchafter, approve.
Roger Griffin.
Roger Griffin, approve.
And this is Catherine Halpern, I also approve. So I think that ends our agenda items. Before we close, I'll just ask if there are any additional public comments on any matters we discussed this evening. There being none, I would ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Catherine, Tom Gagin.
May I have a second?
Roger Griffin, second.
And let's go through our vote, Art Spru.
Art Spru, approve.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, approve.
Tom Gagin.
Approve.
Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus thinks we should hang around another 20 or 30 minutes so I can miss, miss having my blueberry pie. Bob, approve.
Okay, Bob Wurchafter.
Bob Wurchafter wants Bob's pie.
Does that mean you approve?
I.
Roger Griffin.
Roger Griffin, approve.
And this is Catherine Halpern, I approve that we adjourn the meeting. And let's note that the meeting is adjourned at 8:19 PM. Thank you all for your participation, yes.
I, I think we just set a record for four hours and eight minutes.
It was a rather long one, but we are now adjourned. Thank you all for your participation and enjoy what's left of the evening.